Okay, welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, March 29th, 2023. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, and indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
At this time, citizen input. Is there anybody here for citizen input? Please provide a blue form. If not, is there anyone online? Okay, seeing none this morning. Next item is consent agenda. Seven items and a couple sets of minutes.
Oh.
The consent agenda.
Well, I'll second it, but I would like them to add on item number two, the actual amount of the project. The award isn't in the motion.
So we have folks in the room if you want to hear anything about it.
Okay, well, they just didn't put it in the motion, and I just thought.
Let's pull that and just have a discussion real quick.
Okay.
So item number two, quick discussion. Are you supportive of that?
Sure.
Okay, so that's the first motion and a second. For discussion, a minute, meeting minutes, there was just two slight changes I had proposed yesterday, just the wording of the tour in Klamath Falls. It was virtual twice, but I was in the room for a virtual tour, remember? So, because it looked like I was virtual, like in my office, but just a slight wording change. And then also, when we heard from Gwen Wiseling about Bethlehem Inn, I think she was referring to Bethlehem Inn in Redmond specifically at 50%.
Right.
She wasn't referring to both of them.
Right.
So I just, yeah, so I just put the word Redmond in there. So that may have been come, you may have seen that already. Those are the two proposed changes I had. So with that, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. So a quick discussion about the intent to award for juvenile justice remodel. As I say, I saw Lee's in the room, and so your proposal is just to add the amount to the agenda item.
Good morning. Lee Randall, Facilities Director. So typically, on the notice of intent to award, it's not the final contract, so we haven't necessarily established the exact amount. So we still have the opportunity to do some limited negotiation with the contractor as long as the scope doesn't change significantly. And in this case, we've identified some cost-saving opportunities through the bidding process and in the last couple weeks since the project was bid. And so the notice of intent to award will just establish the protest period and puts the other responsive bidder on notice that we're moving forward with the contract process. I think in the agenda packet, we had provided the breakdown of the bid response, and I'm just looking to pull that up here. So Skanska's base bid was 306,745, and the other responsive bidder, O'Brien and Company, their bid was 467,414. And then, in addition to that, we have some alternates related to accessibility upgrades. So we'll be, we think there's some cost savings specific to one of the accessibility upgrades, based on some feedback we got from multiple contractors. And so, and that's fairly common, where it's designed a certain way, and then, as you look at it closely through the process, you can see some more efficient ways to do the work. So at this time, we'll be back administratively. The contract will come for board signature after the protest period. But the expected amount of the contract would be, we're expecting we'll be able to have it less than the 306,000 plus the two additional alternates that are in the bid matrix there.
Okay, well, that's a good point of clarity. So this is the notice of intent to award contract to a specific contractor, and the amount may change slightly, but it shows our thought process through the matrix.
Correct.
Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
So is there a motion then?
So move a chair signature of document number 2023-316, Notice of Intent to Award Contract to Sanska USA Building Incorporated for the Juvenile Justice Project, Remodel Project, and the base bid is 306,745, and we can expect that number to change.
Okay, good discussion. Anything else? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. At this time, item number eight, Final Decision of Commercial Activity in Conjunction with Farm Use Meadery. So this is basically the document from our deliberations as provided. So this is the decision of the Board of Commissioners on this topic. Slight change, right?
Yeah, slight change.
Okay. And I had called with one proposed either clarification or modification, just referring to referencing two decision points and saying three, so it was just a point of clarity. I'll get to that.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nathaniel Miller, Deschutes County Planning Division. The item we are here to discuss this morning is the final decision from the Board for a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use to establish a meadery at 68540 Highway 20. The Board held a public hearing on January 25th and approved the meadery during deliberations on March 8th. During deliberations, the Board made decisions on eight issue areas. These areas and the Board's decisions are outlined in the staff memo for today's meeting. According to the Board's direction, the draft was prepared by the applicant's legal representation, and then edited and reviewed by Deschutes County Planning Staff and Legal Counsel. Staff would like to note that one edit was requested by the applicant's attorney on page 15. This change is highlighted on the single page included in the distributed materials. Commissioner DeBoeck also requested an edit that was a text error on page 14 be changed. The printed copy reflects these alterations and is the most up-to-date version of the decision. So with that, staff would like to know if the Board would like to make additional edits or move to sign the decision.
So yeah, on page 14, it was under the findings, the first paragraph referred to as findings. About a third of the way down the page, it said, it just, it mentioned three components, and then it listed two. So now it says two components. It must be commercial activity, and it must be in conjunction with the farm use, because it just referenced three, and I was trying to find the third or get it resolved there in my head. So that was just changing the word three to two. Okay, and we've all been able to review, and deliberations are complete. So this is really just accepting this written version of it. Is there any other discussion, or is there a motion?
I move approval of final decision for files number 247-22-000024-CU, 025-SP757-A, and 914-A.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion?
And I wanted into the record about weddings. Weddings have been excluded at this location. And in our world, I think that's really unfortunate. They're allowed to have events, but they're not allowed to have weddings. So I just, it really, I feel that that's unfortunate.
And we did discuss that during deliberations, and this was, you know, agreed upon by the applicant, and it was mentioned that a modification in the future could be applied for. So we'll see where that goes.
I will say that I'm really excited that this application is moving forward, and the Lazy Z Ranch can proceed with implementing regenerative agriculture, developing a meadery, and having at least some events at that location.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you so much. Got it tight. Yes, there you go.
And thank you for your five years.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Item number nine, consideration approval to authorize sale of 8.35 acres of property to Redmond. The city of Redmond.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kristi Ballinger, Deschutes County Property Management. We're here this morning, we have John Roberts with us, Deputy City Manager for City of Redmond. We're here to request Board approval of Board Order Number 2023-014 to authorize the sale of an 8.35 acre property in Redmond to the city of Redmond and to authorize the Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the documents associated with the sale. So just going back a little in time, in 2002, the county acquired this property from ODOT, and it was part of a land exchange or land swap. Back in about the summer of 2021, we went through a list of county asset properties, and this popped up on the list as a potential property for disposition. So we went through the process of looking at different partners that might be interested in it, and in reaching out to the city, the city indicated they did have interest, and they submitted a letter of intent in October of '21. At that time, the Board supported moving forward with a potential sale, and so the city went forward and did some initial due diligence, which included a Phase One environmental and a geotechnical survey of the property, and that resulted in determination due to steep slopes, unstable soils, because of the nature of the property being a decommissioned cinder pit, the cost of construction for their intent would be more costly. So they did come back and ask for a reduction in purchase price. And so at that time, the Board agreed to a purchase price of $240,000. So at this point, we're ready to proceed with your support. And with that, I'll pause, and we'll answer any questions you might have.
Kristi, the staff memo says that that conveying deed will include a restrictive clause to ensure the property is utilized for affordable, this affordable housing project. So what happens if the property isn't used for those purposes? Does it revoke to us, or...
So the city's intent, and John can speak more to that, is to develop the property for affordable housing, and then anything that's undevelopable likely just remain as open space. So in the future, if the city wasn't to develop for whatever reason, the county could approach them, and we could, we could get the property back undeveloped. If it was developed in the future, and for some reason it converted to conventional housing and not affordable, that would have to be a discussion that the city and the county would have to have. So, but moving, you know, there, I believe they're going to be acquiring funds that are going to require it to be restricted for affordable housing. So in the future, in the near future, you know, many years out, that wouldn't be an issue.
Please.
Yeah. Good morning, County Commissioners. John Robertson. Additional layer to your point, Commissioner Chang, is that we're using community development block grant funds to purchase this, and so there's many additional requirements through HUD to ensure that the units will be affordable in perpetuity.
My other question was, so this mentioned that in the initial analysis, there were three out of the 800, three out of the 8.35 acres that were clearly not usable. Does that mean that the other 5.35 are usable, or is there still going to be further analysis to sort of shrink down that area more?
Yeah, invariably, there'll be some more in-depth planning, but the concept, I think, is that, yeah, of the eight acres, five will definitely be the footprint for development, and the other three acres reserved for some type of passive or active open space. And in doing some work with our affordable housing providers, we think it's reasonable to expect anywhere from 22 to 30 units on those five acres.
Yeah, I mean, that was my other question. So I mean, if you have five acres available, if this says that you're going to do multifamily housing, I mean, it, you know, 22, 22 units on five acres, that sounds more like single-family densities.
Right. Actually, per the zoning, the intent is not to do multifamily housing, but to do more cottage developments and townhouse-type housing.
Okay.
So, yes. So we consider multifamily housing to be five units or more. Your larger apartment style complexes, and that's not the intent. Our intent is more, think of a Habitat for Humanity Town Homes, Core Land Trust cottages-type development on the five acres.
And so you, maybe, I mean, if, if the design shows that you can fit more than 30 units in five acres, I'd be, my impression is, you know, oftentimes cottage developments, you have like eight or 10, eight or 10 units per acre.
Right. There'll be, perhaps, again, there'll be this balance with infrastructure costs to evaluate in terms of, yeah, how much, and livability, and our code, again, the underlying zoning to see if we could do more than 30. But we'll try to do what we think is reasonable, and again, strikes that balance with infrastructure and livability concerns.
Oh, Kristi, I have a question for you. So in May of '22, the city said, no, we only want to offer now 240, 240,000. And so we approved that. And when did we approve that?
You approved it in an executive session, so informally in an executive.
Okay, but what date, though? Because I mean, I'm just wondering, okay, now we're in May of last year, now we're in March, we're almost in April of this year, and, you know, I like your idea, John. I really like the cottage, the core. I think it's wonderful, especially if you have families coming in. It gives kids some room and some space around their house to go out and have a garden and things. But how long has it taken, then, since we approved it, and then the city finally got back just a couple weeks ago?
The city approved it in the middle of March.
Right.
We weren't able to proceed until the city approved a transaction.
I know, but when did we approve it back to them? I mean, I'm just wondering, because you-
At that time, in March. But there, I mean, John could speak, or excuse me, in May of last year.
We did approve it in May of last year, then. Okay, well, see, that's what gets our world. So why housing costs keep going up is because we have that lag time of, how many months was that? It just, you know, it's like, what, nine months since we approved that price, and then they finally got back to us? I mean, I just think it adds to the cost of building, and maybe the world, you know, inflation was just kind of hitting, and the interest rates were going crazy last year, and they, you know, now they're up there. But it makes things more expensive, and it's really too bad that it's taken this long, but I'm glad that they finally approved it. And, you know, it sounds like a really excellent project. So thank you for that.
And that additional time allowed for two things that were important, and that was needed community outreach with the neighbors, and also time for our CDBG funds, our community development block grant funds, to accrue so we actually have enough money to purchase the property.
Okay, so you had to get your funding, then?
Yes, exactly. Because our directive was not to use any of our general fund money or parks' SDCs to purchase the property, so we needed that additional time for our HUD entitlements. So, and, you know, affordable workforce housing projects often don't move as fast as you'd like, but our vision is to get this completed in a four- to five-year window.
Four to five more years?
Right.
Well, just one note, this was a previous aggregate source, wasn't it? I mean, it's a rocky cinder area with high slopes on the backside, too. So I'm just thinking, you know, as the developer and develop efforts and architectural review, it'll be obvious what kind of fits in that floor footprint of that steep-sloped area, too. So, well, good discussion. Is there a motion?
I approve Board Order Number 2023-014 to authorize the sale of 8.35 acre property in Redmond known as MAP and Tax Lot 151329BB00300 to the city of Redmond, and to authorize Deschutes County Property Manager to execute the documents associated with the sale.
Second. Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, running right through our agenda here today. Item number 10, deliberations. This is a review of two appeals for a modification request to a Thornburg Destination Resorts Efficient Wildlife Mitigation Plan, FWMP.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name's Caroline House, and I'm a senior planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. And I'm here today to facilitate the Board's deliberations related to two appeals for a modification request for the Thornburg Destination Resort. So before I jump into that, there are a couple procedural issues that I need to step through before we get to deliberations, I should say. The first of which is, we received six different comments after the open record period closed, and I just need to confirm that all three Commissioners have not reviewed that evidence, are not going to consider that as part of their deliberations, a decision on this application.
So these are emails that we all received, or?
These are emails that are-
Directly to?
They're on the website, which is the official record, because I had to show that we received them. But I need to, we need confirmation that you're not considering those comments, and I can provide you the names of who submitted them, but they all came to me, or I believe admin staff forwarded them to me, so I don't believe you've received any of them directly, but I can confirm that.
Well, yeah, so I guess I can confirm that I didn't go back to the project website to review the last few items that you're referring to. That's a procedural step, yeah.
Right. I reviewed what you gave us.
I, I've seen some emails in my box, but I, I looked at them with an awareness that I would not be considering the contents as part of this deliberation.
And acknowledging that, yeah, there have been a few emails directly to, you know, to all of us, but they've just taken a position, not substantive to the decision. So it's kind of the same situation. I may have seen emails, but not part of a package at that point.
I do believe, yeah, we're still getting emails in. Yes.
In fact, there have been people I've had to say, I've had to tell, look, this is a quasi-judicial process. The record is closed. You can write something if you want, but we can't consider it.
All right. I think that's all I need for this.
Very good.
The second kind of procedural step that I need to walk through, I'm actually going to ask Stephanie Marshall, Assistant County Counsel, to come up and review. So during the time period between new evidence and rebuttal, we also received a record objection from the, one of the appellant, Ms. Gould, or her attorney. And so Stephanie Marshall's reviewed that record objection, I think is going to provide more background for the Board to walk through what she's found in her review of that.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Stephanie Marshall, Assistant Legal Counsel. So, right, so the letter that we received from Appellant Gould's attorney is dated March 10th, 2023, and the letter is basically two pages long, and the appellant is objecting to inclusion in the record. Let me, I should have actually had this summarized here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight documents that were submitted while the record was open, but were submitted as rebuttal. So as the Board is aware, when the record is extended, left open for a period of time, the first round is new evidence. The second round is evidence that can be submitted in response to that evidence, and then the last round, if you will, which is not really part of the open record, is for the applicant's final legal argument. So Ms. Breger's objections have to do with a couple of her arguments, one of which is that ORS 197-7976 is, and her argument is, the statute is to provide opponents the last word on evidence. And she, her argument with respect to those itemized submissions, which I will go through in my own little packet here, which I'm not submitting as part of the record, this is to guide my discussion to you, is that those arguments could have, or those documents could have been submitted in the first round, and there is no reason why they got to hold them back to prevent appelleants the right to respond to those. I look like, maybe I'll stop here for a second and see if there's any questions as to how this argument has been presented.
And I would just acknowledge that the procedure, procedure that we go through to acknowledge everybody's input is very important here.
Right.
So, you know, I'm just acknowledging that's what we're doing here.
Right.
Making sure we understand.
Right.
How and when things came in, and who's got the last word, maybe, is what we're talking about here right now.
Correct, correct. So now I'm going to, I did spend some time putting together a review of each individual document to, and I also reviewed the applicant's attorney's response to Ms. Breger's objections, and this is dated March 13, 2023. And both of these arguments, objections, and responses are in the record. So, I'm getting to the point where I need glasses. So, like I said, I will first review the standard for requesting exclusion, which is what Ms. Breger's attorney, or Ms. Breger, Gould's attorney, has requested, and then address the allegation that these documents include new evidence submitted in rebuttal. As I stated earlier, the request is based on ORS 197-797. I've got a copy here, if you want me to open it up and read any of it. But as I mentioned, Appellant Gould argues that the structure is to provide opponents the last word on evidence. Legals, legal's opinion is that there is nothing in the statute nor any interpretive case law. So I've looked into case law to see if there's any support, any court has ruled that this is the intent of that statute. So there's no interpretative- Um, so there's no interpretative, uh, interpretive case law that supports this interpretation. Um, and if you go to the actual, um, verbiage in the statute subsection six, it applies to the initial evidentiary, evidentiary hearing and not to appeal proceedings. So, that's, that's the first, that's the first, uh, cut here, if you will. But then the other, um, observation, uh, analysis that Legal provides is that, um, notwithstanding that limitation to the initial evidentiary hearing, um, the opportunity to provide rebuttal evidence is not limited to opponents. So, um, in a typical 777, you could have everybody, you know, opponents, applicant, whatever, submitting new evidence. And everybody has the same right to submit rebuttal evidence. You know, it's not limited to people that are opposed, uh, to the applicant.
And this is a de novo hearing.
Yes.
I'm referring to the one that was in front of us as a board currently.
Right, yes.
And we started off with de novo saying anybody can say anything.
Correct, yes, yes, thank you for that. That is, that is correct. So, there was no limitation on the issues or the evidence that the Board would consider as part of its, um, deliberations here. Except for, you know, I mean, to the fact that, you know, it's got to be addressing some of the approval criteria. Um, but, you know, you know, you take, you take it all in and, and then you get to filter it out. So, um, so then, you know, I've, I've gone over the statute here, 197, 797 subsection six. But Deschutes County also has a provision in 22, 24, 140. And this is, this broadly applies to continuances or record, um, extensions. The Board did not continue the hearing, but it did, um, agree to leave the record open. Um, and then there was an, uh, another request that came in jointly from the applicant and the tribes to extend that further. So, so that's a little bit of the backdrop there. Subsection D of this, um, of this code provision, uh, states, um, "The record shall be left open for at least 14 days, allowing at least the first seven days for submittal of new written evidence or testimony and leave at, uh, and leave seven additional days for response to the evidence received while the record was open. Written evidence or testimony submitted during the period the record is held open shall be limited to evidence or testimony that rebuts previously submitted evidence or testimony." Um, so another observation that I will make is that the, the shall be limited is directed to the folks that are putting evidence in and/or rebuttal evidence. Um, it does not speak to the, um, the Board's ability to consider evidence that is characterized as rebuttal evidence. And I, and I will note again that the applicant has characterized this evidence to which, um, Ms. Gould is objecting as rebuttal evidence. And I'm about to go through that. And I so appreciate your, um, your patience here because this is important. You know, we want to make sure that this is a fair proceeding for everyone and we're playing by the rules the right way. And so, um, this is, this is very important. So, um, the, the next point that I will make is, as an attorney here, is that there's no requirement that a party has to submit everything they have in the first round. You know, they can, you know, I mean, can you imagine what, what the record would be like if they just said, well, if we don't put it in the first round, we can't put it in as rebuttal. So, there is no requirement that you have to put in everything that you have. And, uh, and then, you know, so, so if they don't do that, they're not thereafter precluded from putting something in as rebuttal. That does not do away with the requirement that it still has to rebut something that, that came in during that first round. That's really the key there. Um, so, so just because you have it, and I think Ms., um, Ms. Breger is objecting to the fact that some of these documents submitted in rebuttal are dated 2008. You know, I mean, they're, they're like, well, clearly they had these. Why didn't they put them in first round? That's a strategic decision that an applicant or an opponent is entitled to make. Um, again, provided that it is in fact rebutting something that was submitted in the first round. Okay, we're almost done with this law school class. And then another comment that I make is that at some point, as you all know, the record does have to close. So, there is no procedural requirement for the Board to allow surrebuttal or in, the Board is not required to reopen the record, you know, endlessly to allow more, well, that wasn't really exactly what was said in the opening record. So, so there is, and, and this is the point I'm getting to, is there is discretion on the part of the Board to decide, is this truly rebuttal? Um, and, and if so, you know, kind of weighing the arguments of both sides to allow it in or to say, no, we, we, we're not convinced this is rebuttal and in fairness, we are going to exclude this evidence. And then I did, um, uh, cite a couple of decisions which are, you know, applicable by analogy. Um, the Board has broad discretion whether to allow testimony submitted in rebuttal or to just, to determine that exceeds the scope of rebuttal. Like, yeah, you know, that's, they say it's rebuttal, but I, it just goes a bit too far. It's not like, you know, like you might hear in a court case, you know, well, you opened the door, now we're gonna add this stuff in, you know, it's like, you know, you, you have that discretion, though. And, and that kind of gets me back to my point about 22, 24, 140, which is directed to the, the persons, the people submitting that, um, testimony. It's not directive to the Board, um, as to what has to be excluded. That's a decision that you make in consideration of the arguments and in consideration of fairness, um, under all of the circumstances. Okay, so, the question before the Board is whether the submissions identified by Appellant Gould constitute new evidence that was not submitted in response to evidence submitted by Gould, ODF and W and/or the tribe or any other commenting party during the, the first seven day period. So, I'm, I'm leaving that there for a second to see if there's any questions as to what is before you.
Should we be looking at specific pieces of paper right now? It's kind of a-
Yeah.
Are you asking us to respond?
Yeah, so I, uh, I, I'm gonna go through each one of these and I'm gonna go through what the appellant argued and what the applicant argued. And I'm going to, um, you know, I've reviewed it and I've, I've, I will make notations as to what, yeah, so that's the overall question.
Any of this content part of the current matrix as provided?
Right, no, no, the, the, the decision matrix is-
You got it.
Yeah, this is, this is like a, a higher level procedural. So, so, so I just said what the question was and then if yes, the Board may exclude the evidence, um, pursuant to DCC 22, 24, 140D. The Board does have discretion in making the determination that evidence is entirely new and does not rebut first round evidence submitted by opponents. And again, I'm gonna walk through each of these documents and state, you know, what was submitted first round and what was, yeah. Okay, and if no, if the, your answer to this question is no, there is no legal basis on which the Board should exclude the evidence. And I can circle back to this question and yes, no at the end. Okay, so the first, um, objection is to, uh, a March 8th, 2023 memo from Four Peaks to Mr. Delashmet. So, again, I'm, I'm going down the list in Ms. Breger's, um, letter. The appellant argues that it could have and should have been submitted in the first round. That is the extent of their argument. Just that it was available, they had, they should have put it in, they can't put it in now. And then in response, the applicant argues that it responds to comments from the tribe and from Appellant Gould related to impacts on Crooked River and availability for mitigation and whether Thornburg has evaluated habitat quantity or quality impacts on Crooked River or associated mitigation. So, the appellant objects because they say this should have been in first round. We're not able to respond to it because it was submitted on rebuttal. Because now, you know, the record is closed, it's like, nothing new can come in. So, it's kind of a fairness argument and, um, and the applicant has said, no, um, this document, which is dated March 8th, um, and it has big, you know, uh, indication across it that says draft. So, you know, maybe they were, you know, just working on that and they decided, you know, this, this new stuff that came in on the first round from the tribe and the, and Appellant Gould, um, we're gonna put this in because it responds to these, um, assertions and the evidence that they submitted in the first round. So, um, Legals', I mean, I'm not the hearings officer, I'm not, you know, a deciding body. I have reviewed both the tribe letter and, uh, Gould letter dated March 1st, first round. And, um, and the, those two letters did address these issues that are covered in the applicant's, um, March 8th, 2023 memo. So, my, my advice is it could be considered as rebuttal. I'm not the decision maker, I'm just sharing that.
Uh, so getting back to the, the content here, you mentioned Four Peaks?
Yes.
Who was that?
Oh, boy.
So, that's one of the applicant's experts.
Oh, okay.
They, they, uh, generated reports to support that the no net loss standard is met. Yeah, just to reiterate, the question before the Board is, you know, is, is this evidence that was submitted during rebuttal, which is only supposed to be responsive to the new evidence and other evidence already in the record, can the Board consider that as part of this review? That's the question that, that Stephanie's walking through. So, each of these items are, are materials that, you know, Ms. Breger has said, you, you can't consider these as part of the review.
Yeah.
Stephanie's giving you, you know, her legal opinion on each of these documents, whether you can or cannot consider them.
So, then you're saying, in your opinion, this Four Peaks, uh, document, Stephanie, you're saying that in your opinion, this Four Peaks document is responding to, um, stuff that was in on March 1st?
I'm saying a little bit more nuanced. I'm saying that it does respond to, it could be considered responsive to. I will note that none of the documents, obviously, that, um, that, uh, to which Ms. Breger is objecting, none of that ties back specifically to March 1st, like as, you know, you know, Appellant Gould said X and now we're saying Y. It's not that specific, but does it respond to issues addressed in first round? Yes. So, so I, I want to back up for a moment and say, you know, um, again, there's, as I stated earlier, there's nothing in the statute nor in the county code that says, if you have it, you have to put it in first round. That's, that's a starting point. There's nothing that, that requires you to do that. Um, but you don't get to sit on new evidence and then put it in during rebuttal if it's not responding to something in the first round. Um, and I did mention strategy. I mean, it could be a strategy of the applicant, it could be a strategy of, of Appellant Gould or the tribes or ODF and W. Um, you know, if they don't, you know, they can, they can build their case, if you will, how they want, but they don't, you know, they, and, and then another point is that the Board has discretion to say, you know, yeah, this, this, this rebuts, you know, I mean, whether there was a strategic intent one way or the other, this, this is, this can rebut some of the things that was said in first round. So, um, you, the Board of County Commissioners has discretion to decide whether to allow these documents in or whether to, to have a really strict reading of what is rebuttal and, and say in fairness to the other parties, um, the applicant should have put this in first round. Um, and I wish it could be a little bit more clear than that, um, but it's, it's really, it's, it's a judgment call on your part. And, and I'm not gonna tell you how to decide on any of these. Um, you know, I, I can save some time and say, you know, really each of the documents to which Ms. Gould is objecting, there is, there is a tieback to, to, um, arguments and evidence submitted in the first round. And I really only have one, one question here. Um, and this is kind of the last, the last one of the documents that's, um, in the list of, um, Ms. Breger's objections. Um, and this is portions of the March 8th, 2023 letter from Delashmet, and this is BOCC Number 33, including Exhibit B, Exhibit C, Exhibit E, and arguments made that rely on such exhibits. So, the appellant, again, argues that it could have and should have been submitted in the first round. Um, you get to decide, you know, is that a requirement that if you have it, you have to submit it? And B, you know, um, is this brand new evidence? Those are kind of the things that you're, the lens that you're looking through. So, um, the applicant argues, and they make arguments with respect to each of these exhibits, B, C, and E. The applicant argues that Exhibit B responds to the tribe's letter related to Crooked River. Um, and then I have in parentheses here, note that the applicant's, uh, letter dated, uh, March 13th mentions the tribe's March 8th letter, which is a rebuttal letter. So, they're saying, oh, it responds to that rebuttal letter. So, um, so I have a question there. I said, well, that, that itself was a rebuttal letter, so Exhibit B can't rebut something that came in on rebuttal. Um, however, the applicant also notes that the document was identified as forthcoming during the open record period. So, my question is, could it be pre-rebuttal? Uh, that's, that's something I've never seen. So, um, you know, I mean, if we, if we wanted to really just go through, like I said, each of these documents, um, you know, can it rebut something that came in on rebuttal? I'm not sure.
And we're, we're trying to really be careful with procedure here still, right?
Correct.
That's all we're doing is making sure the procedure is, is as tight as it can be-
Right.
-for this proceeding.
Right.
We're just acknowledging what, what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I'm, I would, I would, I would love to just get to the substance of the-
Right, I know, I know, yes, yes.
Not be digging into these procedural questions to this, this extent, so, I mean-
And I can make another kind of-
This is just the first of eight that we're going to talk about?
Were you saying seven of them will all kind of fit in the same category? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you started off with one, she went in detail, she said there's basically gonna be a bunch of these-
Right.
Generally down the same path.
Mm-hmm.
And then one more, so maybe two different decision packages here.
Right. And I want to, I want to note one more thing. Um, the applicant has argued that, um, Appellant Gould has not, um, made any showing or made any argument that she would be prejudiced if these documents were considered part of the record and relied, relied on. And then another part to that is if the Board isn't like, oh, that document, the boy that came in on, on rebuttal, that was what we really hung our decision hat on, you know, I mean, it could be that, and I, and I kind of paraphrasing here, no harm, no foul. So, there are so many layers to this and, and I, and the reason why I'm taking so much time is, as, 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 um, Chair Debone mentioned, is we want to make sure that we're very, you know, accurate here on procedure and, and are not adding another layer on, on something that could be appealed or, or remanded. And I, and I appreciate, I mean, we've taken, what, 20 minutes or so, so far on this. Um, you know, the, the question really does come down to, um, you know, are, are these like key documents? If the Board brings these in and, or if the Board does not grant this objection, you know, or grant this motion to exclude, if you will, um, is there harm? Um, and, and, and I agree that, uh, that the, the basis of the argument submitted on March 10th is it should have been submitted first round and there's no reason why it wasn't. That's kind of the basis of it. There's, there's, there's nothing in here that, um, says, uh, you know, I mean, that the request is to exclude them and not consider them as part of the record or to have the Board reopen the record to allow Ms. Gould to respond to the new evidence that she alleges was submitted. So, there are, there are two paths here. Um, and I'll remind the Board that, that, you know, we're up against 150 days. So, you know, if, if the Board thought, you know, I'm not, you know, we're not really sure on whether this is new evidence, um, there would have to be a discussion with, um, the applicant to see if there's an, an agreement to, you know, extend the time further and, and go through another round.
Well, uh, I mean, I would acknowledge that, I mean, today is the day for deliberations.
Yeah.
It's only 9:45 and we can take hours if we need to.
Yes.
So, I mean, let's not think we're in a time crunch-
Right.
-for today's business day.
Right, absolutely.
I'm not, you know, so we'll see, if we're here at four or five o'clock this afternoon, then we'll have those discussions, though, seriously.
No, I, I think that's incredibly important. I don't care how long this takes, Stephanie, I want you to do it-
Yeah.
-to your deepest ability.
Yeah.
Uh, I think this is really important. Um, I know that the clock will expire on April 10th and it's almost April 1st, so- So, but we're here, we're, we're extremely willing to listen to what your analysis is.
Great. Okay.
Came a look like you were leaning in for something, or?
Please, I was just going to suggest in administrative hearings-
Can't hear.
Maybe there's a-
In administrative hearings, what some board-
There may be a volume control opportunity here, too. Is there? Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead and get close.
Okay. Can you hear now? Okay. So for administrative hearings, one thing that you can, what hearing officers will do, or in your case, the Board of Commissions, is that you will just let all of the evidence in, and then you will give it whatever weight it is necessary. So you can give it little to no weight. That is something that is certainly within your discretion to do as the Board of Commission.
Well, and the evidence is all in, it's kind of parsing out, is something responsive to something else at the right time? I mean, hopefully I'm following here.
Correct. Yeah, the evidence is in, and, and the, the objection that's been lodged is this is new, and in fairness, we should get a chance to respond to it. That's the objection. So that's, that's, you know, that might be a higher-level decision that the board is, is going to make today is, you know, let's, let's do another round, let's open it up. We're, you know, and again, absolutely, we, we're not here to, to rush anything or say, well, that 150-day clock is, you know, and so that could guide your decision here. Like, well, you know, we're not really sure if this is truly rebuttal. You know, in, in abundance of caution, we're going to exclude that evidence. That's one path. Or in abundance of caution, we're going to, we'd, we'd like to hear more on, on these, these items, which relate, you know, the, the next one is this 2008 impact on fish. The applicant, the appellant Gould is saying that it should have been, you know, it was available, you should have put it in first round. The applicant says, no, we're, it's responding to comments related to the benefits and the no-nut law standard, as it was applied against the 2008 FW and P, and how the two documents, the 2008 and the 2022, relate to each other. And that was argued in first round by the tribe, 3-1, and ODF and W, 3-1, 2023. Both of those letters address these issues. So this 2008 impact on fish document is, according to the applicant, it's rebuttal. So we don't open it up again for more. That's the applicant's argument. The board, again, the decision points here are, is it truly rebuttal? And if so, then, you know, the discretion here is to say, no, the record is closed now. We're not going to either exclude it or open up the record again. Or we're not sure, in an abundance of caution, we're just going to exclude this evidence because we're not sure it actually is rebuttal. Or C, we, we, we want this in the record, and in fairness, everybody should, should get a chance to respond to it.
So, yeah, I'm, a little bit of clarity here. Mr. Chang, do you have thoughts?
I guess, I guess one, one final question I, I have is, are you, you're saying that we can defer the decision about this procedural question until after we go through?
We can circle back. But I think that as part of the board's deliberations today, a decision should be made. I mean, well, a decision has been asked to be made. So, so yeah, you have to decide one way or the other. Is this new? And if so, what's the remedy? And if not new, then, you know, a, a, a ruling on this objection that came in on March 10th.
I guess that, that's what I was asking about, whether we could defer till the end is, this, on the remedy end of things, if we say, okay, the, um, the opponent should have had the opportunity to respond to this, this information, whether at the end we can open it back up. But we may very well be at a point where we, we sort of have a, a clear sense of whether we support the hearings officer's recommendations or not by that time.
Right.
I think one of the questions for the board is, do you think, or maybe you won't know this answer yet, but will you need to rely on this rebuttal evidence, or what the applicant is saying is rebuttal evidence or not as part of your decision? If it's not part of your decision, you don't have, you know, you can just say, we're not even going to consider it, and we're not making a determination, I believe could be a conclusion.
Correct, yes.
So the question is, is, does this evidence change your, your decision in some way? Or, you know, and it would affect the applicant, you know, in front of Luba, they may rely on this for part of their arguments as well. So there's good reasons to make, you know, a clear decision on whether the board is going to consider this as part of the review or not. And so that's why, you know, we could answer this question now, or we could defer to later, but it, it, we'll need to know what the record is that the board considered, you know, and all the evidence you looked at for your decision.
Uh, I mean, I, I might be able to speak on that one way or the other. Could you just rattle through for us the, the list of eight items?
Yes, yes. Okay. And I am looking at the March 10, 2023 letter from appellate Gould's attorney, Jennifer Brager. So number one, March 8, 2023 memorandum from Four Peaks to Mr. Delashmet. Number two, 2008 impact on fish, and this is, and this is identified as B O C C dash 26. And I note that there is no reference for that first item that I just read. Number three, 2017 memorandum by Newton Consultants, Inc., B O C C dash 28. Number four, 2008 letter from ODF and W, and this is identified as B O C C dash 29. And the next one includes four subparts. Portions of March 8, 2023 letter from Mr. Delashmet, B O C C dash 33. And so you've got the letter itself, and then you've got exhibits on which the letter relies. And so this is, this, these objections are to Exhibit B to that letter, Exhibit C to the letter, and Exhibit E to the letter. And the fourth subpart is arguments based on Exhibits B, C, and E. And, and all of these objections are that Ms. Gould, Ms. Gould's attorney is saying that these exhibits should have and could have been submitted in the first open record period. Obviously, a letter dated March 8th could not have been, but the, the objection, and she's prepared a, a redline, or I guess a redacted version. She is arguing that those exhibits cannot now form the basis for this argument, this rebuttal argument. So Attachment 1 to this March 10 letter is a redacted version of four pages from the March 8, 2023 letter from Cameron Delashmet, B O C C dash 33, with what is alleged to be improper argument and reference to evidence, Exhibits B, C, and E, that were allegedly improperly submitted. The original pages, 10, 14, 15, and 18 of the letter are, you know, should be rejected, and this is the argument. And Ms. Gould asks that the redacted versions be accepted instead. And then, as I mentioned earlier, alternative, alternatively, appellate Gould requests that the board reopen the record to allow her to respond to the new evidence submitted. In the absence of either of these remedies, appellate Gould's substantial rights will be prejudiced, this is the argument here, because she will not have had the opportunity to respond to all of the applicant's new evidence used to justify its proposal. That is the argument that is made. And as I mentioned earlier, there is a response from the applicant's attorney dated March 13, 2023. And, and, and in my own little sub-matrix, it's yes, no, applicant's arguments, appellant's arguments for each of these items. And, and the basis for the arguments that Ms. Gould's attorney, ORS 197, 797, sub 6. And then even though there's not a, a direct argument based on DCC 22, 24, 140, that is what, that is a, a decision factor or a decision legal basis for the board. And so I have brought that in. And then I've gone through, you know, is it something the board relied on? Is it prejudicial to the applicant to not remove these or to not allow a response to these documents because they are not truly rebuttal? And then I've tried to go through what was submitted first round, and is this or could this be considered rebuttal for each of them? And, and the board is the ultimate decision maker. And so I've noted this could, could be considered rebuttal, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. My, my, my remaining question is Exhibit B to the Delashmet letter, which, which they allege responds to the tribe's rebuttal letter. So is it a rebuttal or is it a pre-rebuttal? I can really drill down on, on this if, if, if the board wants. We can come back to some of these questions after we go through the matrix. We can, the, the board is asked to determine, keep it in because it actually is rebuttal or keep it out, or because letting it in impacts a substantial right of appellate Gould or other people objecting to the application, or reopen the record. So-
So I've got a, a kind of a vision on this, is I support that these can be and are responsive to first-round testimony in the record. This effort is, is kind of diffusing the whole discussion, is, is a high-level vision statement. So as I say, we could get down to words and pages here if we want, but I support allowing this in the record, acknowledging it as responsive, and, you know, being able to move forward, especially with what counsel just shared with us also, you know, how it ends up being-
Weighted.
Weighted, yeah. And that's maybe for the first, first items you're referring to. So if we break this into two decisions. So that's trying to put direction to it from one commissioner's point of view. Any thoughts?
So Stephanie, you said you had eight items?
Yes.
I got down to five, and then you had four underneath the five, B, C, and E. So what else did I not?
Okay, so, so the March 8 memo from Four Peaks to Delashmet does not have a reference.
Right, I have that.
Okay, then we've got B O C C 26, 28, 29, and 33. And under 33, there are subparts, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, Exhibit E, and then the argument based on those exhibits, the rebuttal argument.
Okay, and that's eight?
Yes.
Okay, good. I've got it all. I just-
Okay. You are correct. Let's, let's, let's identify each, each one.
And we could go study this possibly, you know, take a, a break and make sure we, we're looking at the pieces of paper we're referring to, because in the past, we've, you know, we could do this electronically, you know, pulling up the records as you refer to them. Or we've had a full binder with every piece of paper, which we don't have today, too. So I'm just acknowledging, we've done different things over the years.
And I have all the documents digitally, so I can-
Well, as I say, I could have brought a laptop, and I could have had them live here, too, so I'm not-
Okay.
Wouldn't prepare for that specifically, so, yeah. Any thoughts?
I, I feel like I am familiar with the contents of each of these documents. I mean, it, you know, in the record, we, we see a lot of arguments repeating over and over again. So it's, it's not like this is radically new information. At the same time that, at the same time, I'm not, you know, I, I don't have a photographic memory. I can't recall these documents off the top of my head to say, you know, to make a specific determination like that. I was fully prepared to proceed with the, the hearing today without, essentially without consideration of these documents. So, I mean, that would be my, my inclination is just, I, I believe all the information that's included is covered multiple times in other places, so we don't have to consider these documents as, as part of the deliberations today, but-
But then they'd be, are they specific? So the question is, are they, do we acknowledge them in the record as responsive to the first-round input or not? And then, do, would we open the record again to, you know, allow response one more time? So that, I mean, there, there's a specific ask here that we're responding to. Because I'm in the same spot, you know? I mean, I've read many things many times now. So, I mean, I would support, as I say, that they, they can be and are responsive to first-round information, which would allow them in the record for decisions, you know? And then not, not extending a, a record to open up for more response. Trying to get to those decision points, you know?
I mean, I, if it wasn't for the fact that excluding it from the record might have impacts on, you know, other procedures in other, in other legal settings, I would be happy to just exclude them because I, I really, I, I doubt that there's anything that hasn't already been said somewhere else in the record in these additional materials. And, you know, frankly, I spent all my time preparing for this hearing today, getting my water resources brain together, not my legal procedural brain together.
Well, I'm not, I'm trying to do the, before we get into it, yeah.
So, I mean, I would like to actually exercise that water resources brain that I put together and brought today for the purposes of this hearing, not spend hours and hours talking about this procedural question if it basically doesn't matter because everything that's said in these documents has already been said somewhere else.
So maybe to get to a decision, do we see opening up the record for more response? I guess that's kind of a, an answer from a, a decision body here.
Well, if we did that, then we would basically time out today and have to come back.
Yeah, so, I mean, so the answer, I mean, I support not, not doing that. And so I'm trying to get-
You're saying we should just, we should proceed with today. There were timelines, and in Stephanie's estimation, we should be okay with that.
The, the ask from the appellate, from appellate Gould is to keep these documents out that there is an objection to, with the exception of the March 8 letter, and, and limit that, that letter to the non-redacted, proposed non-redacted portions of that letter that do not rely on Exhibits B, C, and E. And, and then the other previously listed documents. That's, that's the ask.
I wrote down that we have a letter from Ms. Gould's attorney, and I wrote down it was dated March 10th? March 10th? That's what we're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
That's her ask is to-
And then we're referring to the March 8 letter, which is the letter from Four Peaks?
Oh, no. There are the, the listed March 8 letter, or March 8 memorandum, 2000-
Okay.
Yeah, so, so then we've got those listed, yeah, the listed objections that we've gone through. And so appellate Gould's ask is either keep those out, including the redacted portions of the March 8 letter from Cameron Delashmet, keep all- of the March 8 letter from Cameron Delashmet, keep all of that out and redact that letter or reopen the record. And the response from the applicant is we don't need to keep that out. It's proper rebuttal and there is no harm and don't reopen the record.
And I can get there. The applicant's response at this time, yeah, so saying, don't need to keep it out and it is proper response. For this, yeah, for this hearing.
I think we should just not consider it.
Yeah, so, and then there's support for not removing it from the record and there's support for proceeding.
Right.
Is that enough?
Right, so don't keep it out, keep it out.
Don't keep it out.
Right.
And there's two of us saying that. He's saying, don't.
I would say.
Give weight to it, which was exactly what counsel mentioned. It's okay if it's in there.
I guess if you can include it but not give it consideration, that would be my.
Right, so it's still part of the record.
There you go, decision. Do you need a vote on that?
Yes, I mean, I would say that this is the equivalent of a motion from Appellant Gould and so, yes, and so absolutely, I think that there is a decision point here.
Okay, good, well, so we're getting there then. So acknowledge, can you help us with the motion then?
Okay, the motion from Appellant Gould is two-part. Keep it out, keep out the listed documents and redact the portions of the March 8 letter from Mr. Delashmet that rely on Exhibit B, C, and E.
Part one, let's maybe just break it into that.
Okay.
There's support, is somebody ready for a motion or I can try to create it too?
And I can draft or, you know, during a break.
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Legal counsel can prepare the.
Kind of a formal motion words.
Specific motion.
I mean, we could just do a move to include the exhibits referenced by the applicant in rebuttal. Move to include it into the record by, is that sufficient?
Well, it already is included in the record. It's been asked to exclude it.
Right, right. Move to deny the appellate's motion.
Motion to exclude.
Right. There you go.
There you go.
Perfect.
Move to deny, appellate's motion to exclude items.
Documents referenced by applicant in rebuttal.
There we go.
And to deny the request to reopen. So it's a two-part request from Appellant Gould.
Okay.
But Stephanie?
Mm-hmm.
I was taking notes when you were talking about the first objection.
Mm-hmm.
The letter from Four Peaks to Mr. Delashmet, it should have been done in the first round, but weren't you saying though that as attorneys, you have strategy?
Yes.
And are we therefore eliminating their strategy?
If you exclude the document on the basis that it could have been, any of these documents could have been put in first round, that's true. If it truly is, can be considered rebuttal. So it's kind of a nuanced question. A, is it truly rebuttal? And if not, then exclude it. B, if it is and could be considered rebuttal, but, you know, darn it, you should have put this in first round because, you know, the other parties want to respond to that.
Okay, you said Four Peaks could be considered responsive, a response to issues addressed in first round strategy.
Right.
What I wrote down, so.
Right, yes.
All right.
So is there a motion to deny request by appellate to exclude these records and not open the record again?
So move.
I don't know if that's exactly what I was.
When we can clarify.
Is there going to be another motion about not considering this material today?
It's giving it weight, which is us acknowledging it's in the record. So I don't know that that would be part of a motion upfront because it's just, if one of us reference it, then it would be a discussion amongst us saying, well, because I made this decision because of this document or because of this document. So I'm thinking that may be separate.
But there's not going to be a motion to that effect.
I'm just talking it through right now, but I'm thinking not.
But that.
Because it's in the record.
Something you make a motion about.
Right, no, go ahead.
I would just suggest that there would not be a motion regarding what weight you would give in the evidence as.
Up front.
Well, that and it would be your individual decision to, based on whatever your decision is as an individual voting member, to use whatever evidence is in the record. So it's your individual decision. I don't think you need a motion from the board as to what weight you're going to give each individual piece of evidence.
Okay, I'm not going to second that motion.
I will second it then. The other discussion, so this is to deny to exclude and deny opening up the record for response, for clarity. Calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
No.
And chair votes yes, so.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay. All right.
Half hour, forty minutes.
So I'm prepared to walk through the matrix. I don't know if you want to lead with the question, if you want me to present some background. I know all three of you have worked very hard to review the materials in the record, review the matrix and all of the materials. So, you know, I want to defer to you on how to run through the matrix.
Sure, and yeah, let's, you know, be sensitive to every, you know, our opinions up here. Going through the matrix, there may be times we step through an item and not make a decision to get to the next one to kind of back into other items. That's kind of the way I'm seeing this. I don't know that this is going to be a straight shot through the matrix, is that, I guess, what I would acknowledge upfront.
Right, you said to skip item number one, go to two.
Well, it's an opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, so just for, you know, to kind of set the table here a little bit. So the way I've structured the matrix is there's two kind of overarching issues that have sub-issues in the table. So issue one is, does the applicant's 2022 fish and wildlife mitigation plan ensure the no net loss standard is met? What you'll see in the matrix is issues two through eight may help the board form their full opinion on whether one is a yes or no, or if it's a more nuanced finding from the board on that question. So, you know, for background, again, the no net loss standard is directly tied to county code and the applicant is modifying their fish mitigation plan for the Thornburg Resort. And they've provided evidence, reports, and support that they have met that standard. And obviously, there's other parties who claim that's not been met.
So by answering that first item, we're kind of calling it a day. I mean, that's the big question. So I support moving on past that and getting to content in other areas.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so issue number two is, did the applicant present more credible and/or persuasive evidence to demonstrate the no net loss standard is met? So the commissioners will need to weigh all the evidence in the record and decide if one party or the applicant or, you know, I should say all the parties or the applicant have presented more persuasive evidence on their modeling, for example, demonstrating the no net loss standard is met. Obviously, there's a wide range of participants in this process. We have land use attorneys, water right experts, state agencies, the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs, property owners in the surrounding area. It just goes on. So you'll need to decide if you believe the applicant's evidence is more persuasive or if other parties have presented more persuasive evidence.
I guess I'd start by saying that the applicant relies very heavily on their model and their modeling efforts to make their argument that they are meeting a known at law standard and they used a credible model prepared by the USGS. But the concern, my key concern is that you can use a very solid model but not necessarily use right or complete assumptions and data to input into that model. And if you're not, you can have a great model, but if you're not using the right assumptions and inputs, then the output from the model is not going to be very good. So I don't have the basis to judge that myself. And, you know, in scientific issues, which I would say a modeling effort is, that the principle of peer review is really important. And in this case, the peers, you know, that we have a team, a technical team from the applicant who, you know, has used the model, thinks that their modeling effort is great. But I would like to see peer review essentially of their use of the model and the results of their modeling and that supports their position in order to believe that the model is, their modeling effort is sound. And we're not hearing kind of, you know, essentially peer review in this process. We are hearing from the only other experts who are engaged in this process, ODFNW, the Federated Tribes of Warm Springs, you know, from the only other experts we're hearing from this process, we're hearing lots of concerns about the model and the assumptions and inputs that were used. So I don't think that while the applicant submitted substantial amounts of evidence and it's very, it's more specific to the questions, I don't, I don't have the basis to say that I think that this was a solid modeling effort.
So I do support that the applicant's technical evidence was prepared by credentialed experts and that's exactly what I come to even when I read the question again. That's where my mind goes. There is an extreme level of analysis. It could be reviewed, you know, absolutely, lots of, and I think of it as the focus, you know, are we looking at, how big of a picture are we looking at? So, you know, the applicant has provided some very technical evidence and I think this is a, this good for water in central Oregon that this analysis has been done is one of my conclusions. It's good that we have this input on this project to say this is what we did, this is our model. It's very public information at this point. Yes, it could be talked about and, you know, critiqued and different assumptions be put in, but I'm very comfortable with the fact that, you know, we're in a good spot and the no net loss standard is met. I would support that.
They did have the experts, clearly they're experts, presented facts that are way above what I do as far as expertise goes, but the experts seem to be very credible. They had, their qualifications were, you know, at the top and I have to say that the standard has been met.
So.
For item number two.
I would still say, you know, you use a raw, you use one assumption year that, you know, is favorable to your case versus looking at many years. You use, you know, only a specific set of inputs and you exclude others and it can really make modeling results problematic. So I would want to see from independent experts that they believe that this was a solid modeling effort with appropriate assumptions and inputs before I think we can say that this was persuasive evidence.
So we want to get yeses and nos kind of documented here. So I would support yes with the hearings officer first bullet point or all the bullet points, but yeah, I would say yes.
So would I.
I would say no.
Issue number two is, does compliance with the Oregon Water Resources Department groundwater mitigation program ensure the applicant's 2022 FWMP meets the no net loss standard? And I want to note, before going maybe into the discussion on this, so the mitigation that's going to be required as part of their FWMP has three options. The first option does not rely on the Oregon Water Resource Department mitigation program. It relies on the water remaining in stream until it gets to the resort or past the resort, depending on where the water right is currently located. And the resort would be transferring that water right to the resort and then pumping with that water right, but leaving the water in stream to provide the mitigation along those stretches of the waterway or in the ground, if it's a groundwater right, I should say. But then they have two other options for their compliance with mitigation. So one's a permanent in-stream transfer and the other is a cancellation in lieu. And parties are disagreeing on if the cancellation in lieu is actually part of the Oregon Water Resource Department groundwater mitigation program if that will ensure the no net loss standard is met. So the applicant is arguing that not only are their water experts saying that's a process, but Appellant Gould's water experts are saying that's a process. So it's just important to the extent that that question comes up, it'll be, you know, to have a finding from the board on if you believe those two, I guess, second measures for their mitigation will ensure the no net loss standard is met.
So this is down to yes and no questions and a lot of moving parts here. Oregon Water Resources Groundwater Mitigation Program. So you mentioned the cancellation in lieu. There was another terminology that was, it says, well, we don't call it this, but it's this. And as I say, I did my homework. I didn't know what to be prepared for here.
And, you know, I am not a water right expert. You know, I've learned what I know about the Oregon Water Resource mitigation program through this project. So, you know, I would have to point to the arguments that are in the matrix or perhaps circle back on this, you know.
Yep, not a problem.
If I go later to looking at the exact verbiage that's used. But there is a question on if that cancellation in lieu is a process under Oregon's water law or the Oregon Water Resource Groundwater Mitigation Program.
So this question kind of raises another one for me about our no net loss standard, which is how spatially specific is our no net loss standard, is the no net loss standard in county code? I've learned a lot about the state's groundwater mitigation program because there are a number of people who are working right now to try to get it reauthorized because it will expire within a couple of years and we're, well, it's not going to expire that soon, but essentially there was a cap set on how much water can be mitigated and the region is very close to meeting that cap. So they're going to need, they're going to need additional legislative actions. So as I understand it, our, the groundwater mitigation program, you know, while it's administered by Oregon Water Resources Department, which is not, you know, they're not a fish and wildlife agency, the groundwater mitigation program is designed to address habitat considerations. I mean, in the whole, at the high level, back in the day, the basic concept was people want to take water out of the ground, they can mitigate that, they can improve, they can improve hydrologic conditions for the basin essentially and primarily for habitat by dedicating water in stream. And so, you know, at the coarse level, we are talking about, you know, improving habitat in order to be able to pump water out of the ground. improving habitat in order to be able to pump water out of the ground. But the reason I'm asking how spatially specific our no net loss standard is, is because the groundwater mitigation program is not spatially specific at all. You know, it says, you know, like, oh, you can, you know, put water in stream up there in Crescent Creek and do something way down here by Redmond. And that doesn't necessarily mean that the specific pumping that you're doing near Redmond is not going to have localized impacts on fish and wildlife habitat. So if our fish and wildlife, if our no net loss standard is supposed to be spatially specific, then we need to consider that. And I don't think that we can say that compliance with the OWRD groundwater mitigation program provides that level of specificity that would ensure us that no net loss is being met. So can one of you answer that for me?
I guess I'll start with, so the applicant's modeling is showing that the water rights that they're relying on does, you know, benefit the Deschutes Basin. So I don't know if you recall from the hearing, they had that animation where they were showing the 2008 plan, what stretches were improved, and then they had the current 2022 showing where each of those transfers or the point of appropriation is currently for those, and then how allowing that water to remain in stream would benefit the, you know, surrounding waterways, or I should say leave it in the ground in some cases. So the applicant's arguing their plan has addressed the resorts impacts for the basin, and it's not, it's not solely relying on the Oregon groundwater mitigation program, but it is a component of their, their proposal is the best way I can explain it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you had anything there.
Well, I just wanted to address your question, Commissioner Chang, about how spatially specific is the no net loss standard? And, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, you know. And so, I mean, and in my mind goes to some of the other environmental courses, you know, where you've got like cap and trade and like, you know, it's like, well, yeah, you can pollute this water over here, but, you know, you know, when you're moving it over here, you're like, why are these people now, you know, affected by that? So there's, you know, I mean, the area of the law has been developing, I think, for, you know, decades now, but I still think that, you know, and it's been said by others, by other members of staff and CDD, this is a, you know, this is a case, kind of a first impression, you know. We're going out there and into some, some areas that, that are, you know, will be, you know, Thornburg, you know, Deschutes County will be answering questions for the next, you know, for the next generation and the next, the next big proposal. So, you know, the efficacy, I mean, of, you know, water rights and, and achieving no net loss, you know, where we're going to see that, maybe we'll see it more pronounced in one area and less in others, you know, but there's, I wish there was more guidance there. You know, who knew when this was adopted, you know? And the Oregon legislature comes back every year and tries to fine tune this and that, you know, for, for a number of different matters that they're trying to address. So I, you know, we're, we get to, we get to say, does this satisfy no net loss or not? And then, you know, find out as it goes through review how accurate, you know, the county's decision making was.
Right. And thinking beyond hearing, you know, hearing that, hearing that our no net loss criteria are not that, you know, are not clear.
Yeah.
On whether they're spatially specific or not, you know, raises the question whether we should be thinking about that and revising our code, or whether we should leave it the way it is and have a as needed spatially specific discussion every single time this issue comes up. And when we're talking about, when we're talking about fish and wildlife habitat, specifically when we're talking about fish habitat, and we are operating in a setting like the East Side of the Cascades, where the, the, the stream network is not very dense, there's a lot of distance between streams. I think we do need to be, we need to think in a spatially specific way about impacts and mitigation. And so from that perspective, since the OWRD groundwater mitigation program is not very spatially specific within the basin, the, and my answer to this question, does compliance with OWRD groundwater mitigation program ensure the applicant's fish and wildlife management mitigation plan meets the no net loss standard? My answer will be no.
So the terminology I was looking for is the offset involuntary cancellation option.
There you go.
Yeah, so as I say, and yeah, I just had to find it for a moment. So, you know, tools are provided, water's managed by Oregon Water Resources, and, you know, spatially specific in case of first impression, I'll acknowledge that. But knowing that water is managed by the state, I do support that following the rules and the expectations of groundwater mitigation by Oregon Water Resources, you know, I support proceeding that this does support no net loss standard.
The interesting fact is that they have reduced their water usage by 30% since 2008. I think that's incredibly important for that community, and yet there is a percentage in here in our documents that I read that said what a minuscule portion this resort will be using when compared to the whole. And I'll look for that number, and I'm sure I'll find it today sometime and give it to you. So, but it, you know, they have, they are using so much less important, and they're only doing one golf course. So I think, I think those were important decisions to make.
Well, referring to golf courses, I was studying that yesterday. So my understanding is the conceptual master plan and final master plan required one golf course and possibly two or three. I'm just, I'm just getting that on the record, because, I mean, I don't know that they're saying one golf course right now.
They set aside the third one.
Yeah, so that's my point. They say we're not going to do three, but there's nothing saying.
But they're using 30% less water with the way they've reevaluated their landscaping for the entire resort.
I mean, I think it, I think it is important to consider that the, the entire municipal domestic residential demand for water in the entire Deschutes Basin is about 40,000 acre feet. And this proposal could add three or 4% to that. And, you know, given the, the number of people who will be living at Thornburg, I would say, I would not say that that's not significant.
So getting to a decision, the yeses and the noses on item number three, I do support yes in proceeding for this question.
One other component of this that I want to ask about is, there are these questions about temporary versus permanent rights or, or transfers, and, and how those meet the mitigation requirements. I'm, I'm not fully tracking which water is permanent and which water is temporary, and the temporary water, you know, how long that is, and how long we can expect that to be available for mitigation purposes. So I'm hoping that the two of you can unpack that for me a little bit.
Yeah. So the applicant's working towards permanent transfers to the resort's property for the water rights identified in their FWMP. For example, the Tree Farm water right, they have a temporary transfer that's been approved by the Oregon Water Resources Department, but it has a five-year limitation for use. So they also have, the resort has an additional transfer application for a permanent transfer, but that is still pending is what I understand based on the record. So there are, you know, opponents are arguing that those temporary transfers are not a permanent water supply that can be relied upon either for the resort's consumptive use or for their mitigation, and that to, you know, allow the resort to start pumping on one of those temporary transfers may not, you know, meet the no net loss standard because the necessary mitigation water right might not actually be available.
But in the, in that case, you know, in that specific example, the Tree Farm water rights, those are permanent certificated rights at the, at that site, that, I mean, that the owner of that right should be able to temporarily transfer that in five-year increments for as long as that, that right exists, or?
I honestly, I can't answer that question. That's, you know, above my understanding of the Oregon water right transfer process.
And mine as well. You know, I mean, water law is, is its own animal, you know. We had two land use lawyers at the first firm I worked at here in central Oregon, and we had a water rights lawyer, you know. I mean, like, we couldn't be trusted to handle it, I guess. I don't know. But yeah, yeah.
Do you have a sense of whether, whether temporary transfer is, is considered beneficial use or not?
Well, that, you know, I mean, the, the water that exists, you know, so whether you have a temporary transfer or a permanent transfer, if you're using that water, you know, in accordance with the definition of beneficial use, then, then yes, absolutely. I mean, again, not having the OWRD regulations in front of me right now, I can't imagine that if you're, if, if you own the water right and you've temporarily transferred it, you know, that that person's use is still going to keep you, you know, you're still going to have that right until it's permanently transferred. So, I mean, it just doesn't make sense any other way. And again, like I said, if I had the regulations in front of me, there might be like caveats and like, you've got to do this extra, you know, step or whatever. But again, you know, keeping that water right when you've temporarily transferred it, you know, to get to that point where you can permanently transfer it, yeah. But, you know, having that person that owns the temporary transfer, putting it to beneficial use should, you know, with, almost without a doubt, preserve that water right.
Okay. Thank you.
So getting to the decision, please just verbalize your position. Question number three.
I said yes.
I said no.
Okay.
So for question four, it's, is the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife approval of the 2022 FWMP required and/or a substantial consideration when determining if the no net loss standard is met? And the state, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife have stated they don't concur that the 2022 FWMP will yield reliable legally protected wet water that results in no net loss or net degradation of the resource. So they've, they've not come out in support of the applicant's request or the subject appeals. And I guess a little bit of background for the hearings officer, because this was one of the basis of denial. He, he found in his decision, while it's not required and there's no formal agreement, it's still a substantial evidentiary consideration for determining whether or not the no net loss standard is met.
So I would go down with all the bullet points the hearings officer had made, and I would definitely, I would just come to the different conclusion referring to, you know, they are the professionals, it's very important to have input by the ODFNW, they are the partner representing fish and wildlife. But for this, for this hearing, we've got a lot of expert analysis showing that, you know, the chess game of the water that's happening for this update, the, the reduction in water use is good for the, for the no, no net loss standard. So it, you know, basically I agree with all the statements except the conclusion of the hearings officer.
And our document didn't, Deschutes County Code does not require the approval, but the hearings officer felt that it was important.
Exactly.
Okay.
Specifically that they found input from ODFW is a relevant and evidentiary consideration in determining if the no net loss standard is met. I think it is important to note that all the Deschutes County destination resort approvals, including Thornburg's FMP approval, included findings that ODFW confirmed that no net loss standard is met. So if we, if we allow this application to proceed without the blessing of ODFNW, we are breaking with precedent in the way that this, this issue is addressed. The applicant pointed out in, in the last hearing, well, a lot of the other fish and wildlife management plans didn't even deal with fish and water. And, you know, I thought that was an interesting, an interesting argument, and I wanted to learn, learn more about it. And one of the things I've learned is that a number of the other, a number of the other destination resorts are on essentially somebody else's municipal water system. So they're not, they're not digging their own wells and having impacts on groundwater and, and surface water resources in the area. So for example, you know, Tetheroe is on City of Ben Municipal Water. So what kind of impact is Tetheroe going to have? All of the, the evaluation of impact is being done in relation to the City of Ben's municipal water system. So there would be no point in them having a fish, a fish component and water component to their fish and wildlife management plan. So if all of the prior destination resorts in Deschutes County have essentially relied on ODFNW support in order to validate that they are not causing a net loss in habitat, then I think we should continue to use that precedent, and I, I support the hearings officer's recommendation on this.
That's a no for me.
No.
So the voting on this one.
Oh, sorry.
Switched, so sorry. I just, I meant to.
Yes for me.
So, yeah, so yes would be that you do believe it's required or is a substantial consideration. No is, no, you don't believe it's required or a substantial consideration in light of the other evidence in the record.
And because it isn't, it's not required, I would vote no. And then maybe we need to, you know, look at what our, our law does say, and maybe it's at a point in time where we need to adjust it, but at this point in time, it's not required.
So just a couple more statements. You know, there's deeper analysis on this than any other destination resort. There's a lot of history here, where we're updating a fish and wildlife management plan from a previous approval. So it's not like we're, you know, coming up with something new that hasn't been analyzed before. The reduction in water and the deep certified expert analysis is what supports getting to this position. I understand ODFNW's, you know, statement and position, and they are the experts, and I want them to be partners here, but there is, there's just great information in the record showing that the movement of all the water rights and the impact to the, the flow is positive. So, but, yeah, we've made our statements here.
For issue five, is the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs approval of the 2022 FWMP required or a substantial consideration when determining if the no net loss standard is met? And the tribe, as a resource co-manager, states further technical review is necessary before the applicant's proposal can be resolved as containing sufficient evidence to meet the no net loss standard.
So, yeah, this is new and unique in this part of the hearing, you know, because it hadn't been in front of the hearings officer, and I want to thank the tribe for being involved, being in the room, and even being engaged enough to provide us some feedback. I do come to the same conclusion that basically this fish and wildlife management plan is, as I say, is a big chess game with the water here, but it's good. It's good in the end, and it shows, you know, when you utilize these, these water rights and you focus on it, we want to improve, and everybody does want to improve. So as I say, not, not out of disrespect, but I, you know, I come to the conclusion that we can proceed to the next issue and not use this as a stopping point, I guess is the statement.
And your vote is no then?
Correct.
Okay, and my vote would be no too.
The question is, is, can pair. Confederated Tribes approval of the 2022 Fish and Wildlife, uh, Mitigation Plan required and/or a substantial consideration? And I, I guess your answers indicate that you are saying no, it is not a substantial consideration.
Just provide your answer. Don't tell us about our answers.
Um, I'm just, I'm just reframing the question. I'm reframing the question and trying to
Say your part, please.
Okay. I would say that, um, the tribes have treaty reserved rights across the entire Deschutes Basin, uh, and they have, uh, a substantial amount of expertise in, uh, management of fish and wildlife habitat and enhancement of fish and wildlife habitat. So I would consider that a, I, I, a substantial consideration, um, that needs to be considered, uh, when we're talking about whether, uh, we believe the no net loss standard has been met or not.
Thank you very much. So, uh, yeah, I support that no position to be able to proceed.
All right, thank you. So issue six, is are Thornburg's water rights considered reliable and/or wet water for the purposes of determ, or purposes of evaluating the no net loss standard? Uh, we've received a variety of, of, uh, arguments on this. The applicant states that they've provided, um, uh, plenty of information to demonstrate that all of their water rights have been, have past use history, um, and that that will also be revert, reviewed by the Oregon Water Resource Department as part of their transfer, um, proposal. Um, other, uh, state agencies, ODFW, state that that information's not comprehensive enough. And so the question for the board is, um, are the water rights that are being relied upon for their mitigation going to be reliable enough to ensure that that no net loss standard is met?
So I've been in this spot before where if it's a water right, it's a water right. And yes, you can refer to, is it wet water or paper water? And I understand there's a big decision, uh, discussion there. Uh, but I wouldn't feel comfortable, uh, you know, getting down to that detail about which is, which is which, and making a decision because of that. That detail just, uh, water resources does water, and, you know, it, it, either you have the water right or you don't, is, is what I come to conclusion. So I would say yes in this decision.
I, I think we need to look farther than whether you have a legal water right or not to evaluate whether there'll be impacts to habitat or not. Uh, if you have a, uh, certificated water right, um, it absolutely allows you, uh, it, it grants you the right to, um, pump or divert water at a specific spot and potentially cause impacts. Um, and in, uh, in, in this case, uh, the, I think the real questions come up around, um, the current status of those water rights. Uh, if you have a certificated water right that you're not really using, you got a right to, to take water out of the ground at, at the tree farm or somewhere, somewhere else, uh, but you're not actually exercising that right, um, then, um, you have the opportunity not to cause new impact in that spot, but that doesn't mean that you are mitigating the impact somebody, somewhere else by not, um, not starting to pump, uh, uh, on a right that hasn't really been used in the past. So, um, that question of, you know, what the status of these, well, the current status of these water rights is, is, um, huge implications for us understanding what the baseline habitat is and whether, um, you know, whether, whether that water can be used to mitigate other impacts. Uh, if a new well is drilled at, at Thornburg, um, and is, is, um, pumping out some hundreds of acre feet of water per year. So I, I don't think, I, I do not have enough information uh, to be able to say, um, yeah, and, and the, these use of these phrases like wet water and paper water, I, I don't know if they're quite the right, um, the right phrases to use in trying to unpack that, but, um, I, uh, the question of, of, uh, reliability for evaluating whether, uh, a net impact has been caused, I, I don't think we have enough information.
There was a lot of reference in our reading on groundwater permit G 17036. I think we read about it repetitively, and then, um, actually in Exhibit B on page 18, um, it went into further things that Thornburg was going to be doing regarding the water and the fact that they would be using groundwater from their wells. So I, um, you know, I would, I would say, um, continue on to the next issue. Just a yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, so for seven is have the no net loss mitigation requirements been met for Whitechus Creek? Um, so the applicant's FWMP and their, their submitted modification request states that the, um, what was FMP Condition 39, which required the resort to, or the applicant to enter an agreement with the Three Sisters Irrigation District to add 106 acre feet of water through, um, canal piping projects essentially, um, would, on its own, completely mitigate all impacts from the, the resorts pumping on Whitechus Creek. Um, parties have raised concerns stating that that's not sufficient to mitigate the impacts to Whitechus Creek. The applicant has stated their modeling and expert reports demonstrate that the mitigation from that project is all that's needed to, um, meet the no net loss standard. So the question for the board again is, have the no net loss mitigation requirements been met for Whitechus Creek under Condition 39? Is what that actually should add, that little "s" to fit there.
So I'm, I'm interested in, uh, your, you know, your knowledge about this one, as in, it's kind of, it's a completed project. It's in the rearview mirror now, and it, I think there's a lot of benefits, but yeah.
Well, I, I'm, I love to ask, I love to ask more questions. Do, uh, have the courts weighed in on this specific question? You know, on, on, on this, uh, Three Sisters Irrigation District mitigation, at other times in relation to the Thornburg, um, Destination Resort?
Do you want to go first, or?
Sure, sure.
Okay, so, um, for history, and I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, so if I do, and just tell me back up on a higher level, but Condition 39 was added after the original FMP was created, the, or the one, the 2008. So this was part of a remand proceeding where, um, it wasn't clear if the summer irrigation from the resort was going to have additional impacts. To address that, the resort or applicant at that time proposed Condition 39 to add an extra 106 acre feet to Whitechus Creek to offset those impacts. So the courts have very clearly found that that met the no net loss standard under the 2008 FMP requirement, or FWMP requirements with that, that supplement. I don't know, and I'll also ask Stephanie to weigh in on how that ruling would be tied into their current 2022 FWMP, if that's binding or not. So I'll, I'll defer to Stephanie on how those were intersect.
Right, and, and, um, uh, and this is in the matrix here, you know, the applicant has argued that the mitigation requirements have been settled, um, by approval of the FMP, and, and Luba found that the, uh, TSID, uh, water mitigates for all resort impacts to Whitechus Creek. So, so, um, I understand that the applicant is essentially arguing that, you know, if you, if you say no, uh, to this question, then you're essentially attacking those prior rulings, you know? And I'll, I'll leave it up to the applicant to make those arguments. I'm not going to say yes or no on that. Um, but, but given that, um, you know, I mean, what, what you're weighing is, um, is, is the applicant's arguments and ODFW, uh, their comments, and the tribes, and, and appellant Gould, um, who have kind of, you know, made their own statements, um, around this. And, and part of the reason why I try to be careful here is, is I'm, I'm legal counsel, and I don't want to be seen as like guiding you, uh, in any particular direction on, on resolution of these issues. So I'm, I'm kind of trying to tread carefully, if that makes sense. Um, but do know that the applicant has, has definitely taken the position that this is settled, that, you know, there, there is, it's, it's an absolute yes for this question.
And, and I mean, if, if, if money has been invested and 106 acre feet has been dedicated, um, through all the, uh, the, um, irrigation modernization work that the Three Sisters Irrigation District has, has done, and the courts have found that that, uh, that meets the requirements, then I don't have any reason to, to question that.
So yeah, we, we were able to go to that ribbon cutting event out at their hydro facility, and there's a
Right by my house.
There's an open reservoir. Uh, have, are you seeing more wildlife? Walk up to, I think.
That's always a good idea, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Now they're at my house drinking now.
Yeah. And, and I think there's known water in the, uh, you know, in the system all year long now, where it was drying up, uh, just a few years ago, so.
Right, it's definitely made an improvement.
I sup-
I, I do believe that the concern with this, um, with this application, with, with the Thornburg Destination Resort is, will it have impacts on Whitechus Creek down in the lower reaches? While, you know, the water that, that is put back in the system up at, uh, or is left in the system up at the Three Sisters Irrigation District diversion is, is pretty far upstream, but, um, it, it sounds like, I mean, the courts have, the courts have found a certain way on this, on this question already.
So I support yes on this also.
I'm yes, and I have the river otters to prove it.
There you go.
And Commissioner Chang, that was yes from you as well?
Yes.
All right, for eight is, um, does the board find the excess mitigation measures in the 2022 FWMP provide additional mitigation beyond the resort's no net loss requirements? So the FWMP, the proposed FWMP, has required mitigation. In addition to that, the, um, plan identifies three excess mitigation measures, which they are also, um, stating have benefits when accounting for the no net loss requirements. The three additional, or what I'm, I think are what I've termed excess mitigation, um, proposals are ones that, what's called it, what they're calling, I should say, advanced mitigation by leaving water rights in stream um, before the resort actually needs to pump that water. So, you know, they're building out the resort in phases, so they'll be holding these, these water rights, um, or they'll be transferred to the resort, um, but they won't actually be pumping all the water that they could under those water rights. So they're arguing that that time in which the waters continue to stay in stream creates an advance benefit or advanced mitigation. The second excess mitigation is for juniper thinning, um, so they are proposing to do both onsite um, thinning and thinning on BLM lands as well. And, um, they've, I think as part of their final legal argument, they've added actual, um, measurements to assign volume of water savings associated with that. And then the third measure, um, or excess mitigation measure is to discontinue use of three exempt wells on the property. And this is important because to the extent, um, the resort needs to change what mitigation they're going to use to meet their no net loss standard, right now it's not including this. They don't need this to meet the no net loss standard. But if they were to change this in the future, um, it will be important, uh, you know, we, you could decide now that that could be counted and not have to go back through another review process. Um, and I, I, in my, my staff comments, um, I believe the board could make findings that those could be used, but the exact amount would need further review, um, because they, for example, haven't provided clear details on what areas are doing the juniper thinning. So for us to monitor and report, that would be problematic, in my opinion. Um, so that's kind of my background on that. I don't know if, if you have questions or what your, your thoughts are on this one.
One, people can't hear. Okay, another framing question I have, um, before we dive into this one is, um, does our, does our fish, our, our Fish and Wildlife no net loss standard, uh, requirement have a, have any kind of temporal criteria associated with them? You know, like, um, juniper, juniper treatments, assuming you do them in the right place, which is in, you know, in the vicinity of a spring or a creek where, where groundwater is very shallow. Um, if you're doing them somewhere else, then they, they have no benefit for fish and wildlife habitat. Um, but assuming you're doing them in the right place, that only has a temporary, um, a temporary benefit. And, you know, as shrubs and, and grasses and forbs and all sorts of other stuff fills in, um, those will take up water eventually on themselves. Um, so, I, you, you, uh, so the reason I'm asking is, is there a temporal dimension or temporal standards associated with our no net loss requirements is, you know, that, that juniper treatments are a temporary benefit. I mean, you know, you could say, oh, well, this does provide fish and wildlife habitat benefits for five years, but after that, if it, if it doesn't, I mean, does that meet our, our standard or not?
Right, yeah. Um, I'll jump in. Um, uh, no, the, the code does not, you know, say you've got to show no net loss on the date of approval, but, but that's where conditions of approval can be crafted, you know, for maybe larger proposals like Thornburg or, you know, um, more sensitive areas, if you will, you know? Like this is going to have, this is, this might need additional monitoring beyond, you know, something proposed over in Sisters, or, you know, what have you. And I'm just throwing these out as examples. But, um, because the standard itself doesn't give you, uh, temporal, you know, like, you know, for, for, you know, 50 years, 100 years, 10 years, um, it's, it, it becomes up to the decision maker to decide, you know, what kind of monitoring or what kind of additional showings or, or, or what have you to keep that, that scale really, you know, balanced in the direction that, you know? And, and, and I'll also comment, you know, I mean, there's, you know, you all know how large this record is and, and all of the expert analysis and review, you know, I, I would venture to say that it's, it's, it's kind of hard to say absolutely taking out the juniper will give you five years of, you know, or 10 years or, or what have you. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of, um, uh, educated guessing, you know, that's going on. It's not just, you know, um, you know, uh, just off, off the top of your head, but there's, you know, you have experts that are studying this, and they can provide you a range, you know, of 304 acre feet to 912 acre feet, but there's a lot more that, that could tip that balance, one way or the other. And, and that's where I say, you know, if the board wants to see something more, you know, maybe, you know, come up with a condition of approval or, or, or what have you to, um, provide what it is that the decision-making body is, um, looking to ensure, if you will.
Commissioner Chang and I have a deep difference of opinion about junipers. To quote, um, Andy Hi, who runs Thompson Pumping, um, he said, you've got to get rid of the junipers. They look at pictures from 100 years ago, and then actually, they use Dr. Tim DeBoo from Prineville, who is a, um, OSU professor emeritus, and he was testifying in Washington DC several weeks ago after he testified in Salem regarding our juniper bill for Central Oregon and how the juniper have taken over. And sure enough, do we need the grasses back? But does a grass use 50 gallons of water a day like the juniper have been known to do? So they do have their expert in here, and I was, um, you know, I feel juniper, um, control is really something important for our community. Not only, um, is the water they use, they also, um, um, they're a Roman candle if you've got one next to your house. So, you know, it's, it's really, um, something to think about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm intimately familiar with Tim DeBoo, Tim DeBoo's paired watershed study over in the Crooked River Basin. And, um, I can tell you that number one, the benefits of juniper treatments attenuate over time. Assuming you actually do stuff to keep- treatments attenuate over time. Assuming you actually do stuff to keep the juniper from coming back and to keep weeds from infesting the area, they still attenuate over time. And number two, the hydrogeology of the Crooked River watershed is completely different than the east side of the Cascades, which is many, many, many millions of years younger geology, very porous volcanic, volcanic rock. So the applicability of Tim DeBoot's research in Deschutes County is minimal.
So on this decision
Well, my research is that I walk from my house to my barn and if I go under my juniper trees, there's nothing underneath them. So it all goes into the tree. So that's just personal experience.
Yeah, that's, that's a couple of inches of soil. That has nothing to do with what the habitat impacts and shallow groundwater impacts are of juniper.
So the question is, do we find excess, excess mitigation measures provide additional mitigation? I'd say I would support putting this as an addendum or a couple paragraphs in a decision if we get the yes today. I mean, these are just things that are offered. I, you know.
Yeah, so I
So if you look at the document 10, 20, 50 years from now, like, oh, they were thinking of, they were thinking it was valuable to cut junipers back in the day, or, you know, whatever it looks like 50 years from now. That'd be interesting to have it in the document.
So I guess I'm just writing out kind of my thoughts on maybe what the vote, the board could vote on because yes or no, it's probably too simplistic of a response on this, obviously.
That's kind of what I'm
So, I mean, I think, you know, no would be just going through the options easiest to more complicated. No would be no, you don't believe these additional mitigation measures meet the no net loss standard. Does not appear to be the direction the board's going. The second option would be yes, these excess mitigation measures do ensure, or do offer mitigation for the no net loss standard, but a separate application to modify the applicant's FWMP to incorporate these would be necessary. And the fourth or third option, excuse me, would, could be, the board finds these excess mitigation measures provide the necessary mitigation and no further review is, is needed and could be used interchangeably. Like that, I think that's kind of the three options I see.
Yeah. And I don't know that I would support interchangeably. So I would support, as I say, a couple paragraphs in a decision that explain, you know, this, there is a long period of time that we're not using full water rights. So there's value there. If we cut down trees, it may save some water. If we, you know, don't use these wells, we're not going to, you know, use this water. So, I mean, just acknowledging these things as truth, but not part of a decision. You know, having it written down somewhere. I mean, I guess the exempt wells, would they have the authority to use those exempt wells for any purpose on the property? I mean, because, I mean, I think they need to be
If your rural residential is gone, then do you still get to use your exempt well?
I think they need to be abandoned anyway as part of the decision.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to jump in because, you know, and, and, and I agree generally with, with everything. I think the, the direction that staff needs here is, you know, that these could be excess mitigation measures. And I like the idea of like, you know, it'll be interesting to look back years from now. But standing alone and having these excess mitigation measures in this 2022 FWMP, is that, is that just go ahead and do those? Or is there a separate review that's needed in the future if any of the, of the no net loss provisions essentially in the FWMP are unavailable or, you know, that, so, so is there a future review that's necessary or not?
So the decision could be, would we acknowledge that 300 to 900 acre feet of, of mitigation is created if junipers are removed? And, I mean, you're saying no because it's, the geology is different?
Well, I don't know because A, I don't know where they're going to do these juniper treatments.
Yep.
B, I don't know how long we're, you know, what our timeframe is that we're considering. And I guess my, my, kind of the next place I would take this is if we said yes to this question, does this, does that basically mean next time we see the model, there's going to be some 100 acres of juniper treatment built into the model and claiming X amount of water benefit from, from those juniper treatments? Because that I, I don't think. I think these, these three items are, you know, have potential benefit for fish and wildlife habitat. But, you know, I, I don't think that they should be considered as part of the mitigation framework.
Great.
And I agree with that also.
Well, you, you actually make a comment a couple pages beyond this where lastly it's unclear to staff why the applicant has included the three excess mitigation measures. So looking at all that, I, my comment is that they've listened to the public and they are doing things that they feel will be beneficial to the good.
Yeah. I, I, I noted that, you know, like the question mark, you know, goodwill or backup, you know, maybe both, you know, but, but without a future review, you know, you know, we, we don't essentially, no.
And this also steps in, I mean, we're not going to say, we can't, you know, the Board of Commissioners isn't going to say, okay, you have 300 acre feet water rights. I mean, that's, that's Oregon Water Resources, right? Not even close to, and it's not even possible anyways legally. So the answer is no. They would have to come back for land use approval. But as I say, I support having the words in, in maybe a document somewhere for a future.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe described as a potential additional benefits.
And Commissioner Dare, do you agree with, with the, the direction?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So all the issues we just reviewed, two through eight, go back to the first question. We can come back to that later and continue with nine, or we can go back to one now if that would be preferred.
Uh, well, yeah. So as I say, when we did look, when you look at number one, kind of answers
We should go back to one for your modeling.
Okay. All right. So based on that discussion, the Commissioners are being asked, does the applicant's 2022 Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan ensure the no net loss standard is met? Yes or no?
So yeah, this is the, the question of the day. And, and I do support proceeding. You know, this, in the big picture again, this is the update to a previous approval. There's a lot of improvements. There's less water use. I know that, you know, the hearings officer decision was, you know, how does it lay out into the future, holding on to the no net loss standard? And these conditions of approval are, I mean, maybe that's a different discussion coming up. But yeah, conditions of approval are out there too. So I support yes.
Based on my answers to questions two through eight, I would say no. I have concerns about the model. I don't believe that compliance with the OWRD groundwater mitigation program ensures, ensures that the no net loss standard has been met. Yeah. I, I think that the, that both ODF and W and the tribes, evaluation of this issue is relevant in this consideration. Yeah. There's questions about, about whether this is, the water that's being used is actually mitigation or whether it's, you know, water that is not currently being taken out of the ground and, and hence does, you know, is, is not, you know, could help prevent further impacts in a site, but is not necessarily mitigation for onsite pumping at, at Thornburg. I, I do, I do support the, that the requirement has been met for Ychuse Creek. But, and then that last item eight, I, you know, I, these are, I, I do not think that these excess mitigation measures should be considered as a potential additional mitigation, just as potential additional benefits.
And my answer is yes.
All right. So thank you for going through those. Moving on, moving back to issue nine, so page 133 in your packet. Similar to issue one, the board may find issues 10 through 12 will help form your final decision on this particular issue. But issue nine is, does the 2022 FWMP ensure ongoing compliance and sufficient monitoring? This was one of the basis of denial from the hearings officer. And through the appeals hearings process, the applicant has brought forth a new, a new condition and a revised condition to address some of the hearings officer's concerns, as well as they updated their FWMP document, providing a third version with clarifying compliance language. Parties argue that that's not sufficient and still does not demonstrate ongoing compliance and ensure that there's ongoing reporting that's enforceable. So would the board like to start with issues 10 through 12 before answering this one? Or do you want to just go ahead and knock this one out?
Well, the matrix is working out very well today.
Yeah, let's go back, let's go on to 10 through 12.
Yeah, okay. I support that.
Okay. Issue 10, are the proposed water rights that will be used for the resort's water supply a mitigation reasonably certain to be approved for transfer by the Oregon Water Resource Department? And as I mentioned earlier, the required mitigation under the FWMP has three components. The first option, which is the one that like the, the animation that they had in their hearings presentation is based on the transfers being approved. And in the alternative, they still have the ability to cancel those or transfer them permanently in stream and have a new water right instead of a transfer to new water right to draw water from the resort's property. However, if the transfers weren't approved, you know, there's more that goes into getting a new water right. So this is a key question is that, does the board feel confident that the proposed water rights that the resort will be using for both their supply and the necessary mitigation will be certain to be approved for transfer? I guess I should, I want to read some of my arguments just to make sure I haven't missed anything. Oh, key point. The resort still has their G17036 permit, and that permit continues to be non-canceled. So that's still incorporated into their FWMP. And even though there's indications in the record that that water right may be canceled, it's not canceled as the close of this record. So the courts have found that the resort can continue to rely on that water right based on that non-canceled status. So that's important to note. And Stephanie, is there anything else on this one that you can think of to add?
No. I think you've covered that, you know, the, I'm glad that you made the statement about the, gosh, I can never remember the, the G17036. So that's kind of a question mark, but it, it's, you know, it's, it's included in this plan and it still remains non-canceled. So, and then, and the other thing that we can get to is the proposed new condition 40. Did you mention that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, perfect.
And the comment that I take is that based on the evidence in this record, to quote you, it can take years for water right application to be reviewed by OWRD, years and years and years. So I, I think we clearly see that in here. And it's good to know that that significant permit is still valid.
Non-canceled.
Yes. So.
So I conclude yes here, knowing that this, putting direction to it will, will help Oregon Water Resources land, you know, because they're probably floating on some of the decisions here because of the land use, you know, not, not being approved or, you know, because of this process. So if this document gets done, might help Oregon Water Resources finalize some of their decisions. And that's their domain. I don't know exactly what's going on there. But I support proceeding that the water supply is reasonably certain to be approved.
And I would say yes also. But then again, you know, we have those two, 38 and 40, which apparently we need to work on when we get back to nine. And we're, we can clearly do that within our timeframe then to update?
Oh, oh.
Yes. So that's, that'll be the question.
Yes.
And do we have to hire a water expert?
No.
No.
That would be outside evidence.
No, I meant in order to write it.
Oh, in order to write it?
Yes.
Uh, well, the, the applicant would be the prevailing party. So they're, they're going to be writing that.
Okay. All right. Well, I just know that they weren't, yes, they
I mean, I just made an assumption.
Said it needed more clarity.
Yeah.
Unlike a bunch of the other issues that we just considered, this is more of a legal water rights question than a, than a water resources management question. And I, I would rely on the opinion of our hearings officer, you know, who is, who is a legal expert and is intimately familiar with the, with both the Thornburg, all of the Thornburg applications and, and this specific application. And the hearings officer is finding that essentially the hearings officer found, no. So I would, I would support the hearings officer's findings on this one.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to issue 11, does the 2022 FWMP ensure the proposed mitigation water will be permanently protected in stream? Yes or no? So in some ways, this ties back to an earlier question about the Oregon Water Resource Department's groundwater mitigation program and the cancellation in lieu question. But it also ties into how the water that if they do the transfer option where they're leaving it in stream and it's just continuing down, but there's no permanent in-stream transfer, I should say, or cancellation in lieu, is that water protected in stream? Is there, you know, is that going to be met? The applicant argues that, you know, they have those two other options and that the transfer is an acceptable method and that Oregon water law allows that as an option as well. So again, the question for the board is, under the 2022 FWMP, will the proposed mitigation water be permanently protected in stream? And that's to provide obviously the no net loss benefit.
When we're talking about surface water, I think the big concern is that if you don't retire a surface water right and create a new permanent in-stream water right, then that, that water is just subject to diversion by the next junior water rights holder. I, I don't think that you can say that the water is permanently protected in stream without the, without permanent in-stream water rights, you know, capital I, capital P, capital I, held by ODF and W.
Well, so this is the, you know, appeal in front of the board. And I think there's, you know, information in the record talking about this cancellation in lieu, which is offset involuntary cancellation option, which I think is more information and permanent. I mean, I, I come to the same conclusion.
No. I mean, you can cancel, you could, you could extinguish a, a surface water right. But unless you also establish a permanent in-stream right, then somebody else could just divert the water because the, the basin is overappropriated.
I, my intention would permanently, permanently extinguish the right. So I mean, I, I mean, are they, yeah, so.
There are a lot of junior water rights holders who don't get their, don't get their full allocation, their
Yep, understood.
Every year. And they would have every opportunity to take the additional water that's running downstream.
I'm a yes.
So as I say, water experts agree voluntary So as I say, water experts agree voluntary cancellation is an acceptable form of mitigation. So I'm thinking we have information in the record that says it's acceptable and it's permanent. I mean, and I, now I'm not so sure because I'm not a water expert, but I'm thinking we're getting there. Hearing officer didn't have this information, we do.
And Stephanie, maybe you can speak to this, which is, you know, when you have competing evidence or competing answers, it's whose evidence is more persuasive.
Right.
That's the answer, not necessarily who's right.
Right, right.
In your opinion or what you know on your own.
Right. So as the fact finders and conclusion of lawmakers, as the fact finders here, you get to and you should consider all the evidence in the record, obviously, and then decide if there is substantial evidence to support your decision on, on these, obviously, decision points. And I think I mentioned this the other day in a meeting, substantial evidence doesn't mean the person that puts in the most paper wins. Although, you know, you'd be hard pressed not to find that here, right? Just because there's so much paper in the record. It's, it's who, who or whom or what do you find the most persuasive, you know? And substantial evidence is one that would, you know, reasonably convince a fact finder that, that the, you know, that the statement is, is true, you know? And I'm totally paraphrasing. I know that there's an actual holding in Oregon law that talks about what substantial evidence is. But you get to weigh the competing arguments and the competing opinions of the various folks that have testified on behalf of the applicant, appellate Gould, who said what from fish and wildlife and the tribes. It's up to you to weigh that, you know? That's, that's the beauty of this is you get to weigh that and say, I find that this evidence here is the most compelling and, and the most persuasive. Therefore, it's substantial in my mind and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm going with what this evidence says and making that a finding.
Well, as I say, I, you know, I guess I didn't research this enough to have more backup on this, but as I say, the word, now I'm looking at the words, all parties appear to agree that the required mitigation must be permanent and in-stream, which you say and I say. So I think the conclusion is, I mean, I want to proceed from, from the, you know, the decision process I've been proceeding with, but I don't have that next level of information.
Yeah, required, all parties appear to agree that the required mitigation water must be permanently protected in stream for the no net loss standard to be met. It's the question we're asking right now. That's not a, that's not a statement that, that it's been required, it's been met.
No, but does it, does the?
And I mean, the.
I want to proceed and I don't have more information.
You said cancellation, cancellation in lieu mitigation is acceptable, and then all these other entities, you know, all these other bullets on this page say that other entities say that it's not enough.
Well, yeah, so as I say, I don't have more backup to be able, so are you saying that a, you know, as I say, we got to the terminology of the Oregon Water Resources opportunity for offset involuntary cancellation is not a permanent in-stream right?
Um, I am.
Yeah, so I don't, I didn't take that any farther to, but as I say, I want to proceed, so.
I just want to note too, that the applicant at times says that it's not actually necessary. So that, that statement in the matrix is a little misleading. So at other times, they do provide, you know, those excess mitigation measures, which don't tie into, you know, the water right process as also being, except for the, I should say, abandoning the Wellswood, but the other two don't clearly tie in to the water permitting process. So at times, they appear to argue that their proposal does ensure it, but then other times it's not as clear. And I don't know if you want to add to that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, they appear to offer alternative arguments that saying that it may not even be necessary to, to meet the no net loss standard and their plan has those other options.
Right. Yeah, and, and I was just going to say Caroline did a really good job in this issue 11 under the description, you know, summarizing the applicant's position and appellate Gould and ODFNW and the tribe, you know? So, so for example, the applicant argues that Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, their issue, according to the applicant, now I know they're speaking on behalf of ODFNW, is that they will only accept a single method of protecting in-stream flows, whereas water law provides for additional measures. And I think that's kind of building on what, what Caroline was just saying. So according, and this is the applicant's argument, I'm not saying this is fact at all. ODFNW disregards other methods the evidence shows are protected, and these include the cancellation of, in, cancellation in lieu mitigation or offset involuntary cancellation option. So, so there is, you know, there's competing arguments on this, you know, to, to keep going down the bullet points here. Gould is challenging the proposed compliance provision because she's, she's arguing that it's made up of cancellation of surface, surface water right in lieu of mitigation, but there's no mechanism in Oregon water rights law. So this is kind of challenging and I, and I, and I see this because you as the, the board here as decision makers are, are essentially weighing what various parties are telling you, what Oregon law allows or does not allow. And kind of gets back to one of the other things that I said earlier, which is, you know, who's, whose arguments do you find the most compelling? And, and you're entitled to, in, in weighing that evidence, you're, you're entitled to make your determinations based on factors, you know, like, you know, well, when the tribe came and talked, you know, we found that very persuasive. We found that they seemed very honest or, you know, whatever is going on in your mind or if you have questions on the other side of things, you know? That's what the weighing comes down to. This is just a list of everything that's been presented, the arguments and all, and you get to weigh those and, and make that decision.
And I, I'd just like to take a moment to kind of like pull up a level from this matrix and say that the, the applicant has made, has, has put forward a proposal that very well may be better for fish and wildlife than the 2008 Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan. The problem is that I need, I need to hear certain things in order to believe that. I, I need to hear independent testimony that the model is sound, the modeling effort is sound. I need to hear or I need to, I need to see that there's going to be a, a monitoring program, a rigorous monitoring program put in place to ensure that, that the mitigation happens and that it has the impacts that it's intended to, to have. Or I need to see things like permanent protected in-stream water to know, oh yeah, that the water's permanently protected in stream. I, I buy it now. So I, I, I come to this process, I try to come to this process open to the idea that this is a better fish and wildlife mitigation plan than the 2008 plan. And I've heard some, you know, from, I've heard some reasonable arguments that it might be, but we need, we need verification and assurances to be able to, to, to buy that. And, you know, on, on a number of these questions, I'm not, I'm not hearing it. So that's, you know, that's how I would frame my, my response to this question, which is, you know, are we, does the, does the 2022 Fish and Wildlife mitigation plan ensure the proposed mitigation water will be permanently protected in stream? I would love to hear a, a response that led me say yes, but I'm not hearing it. So I'm, I'm saying no.
So, and I'm kind of in a spot where I don't, I mean, I want to proceed, knowing that this is going to be good and there's going to be a lot of, you know, moving parts that'll come out of this decision, this land use decision by being able to proceed with the wildlife management, Fish and Wildlife Management Plan. So I mean, I'm almost ready to punt and work towards how do we just get to a, you know, a decision with, you know, the quorum of the board proceeding, but yeah.
So you're voting yes on this or you want to stop moving through?
Uh, well, so I mean, my thought process for this is in-stream, is that, I mean, is that, I mean, what's the requirement for in-stream? As in, there's going to be a lot of moving parts here. So, you know, how much water are we talking about? And why would this Fish and Wildlife Management Plan talk about some specific water right in, you know, because it's going to be some variable that's going to go in the river? So I mean, how can we make just a black and white statement at the top of this thing saying mitigation water will be permanently protected in stream? So as I say, because there's a lot of moving parts for the, the water rights that are going to be used for this over the years.
I think maybe a different way to frame or phrase this question is, does their mitigation plan provide sufficient flow and water to mitigate their pumping? That's, and is that water going to be there? That's the most simplistic way I can think about that. And have the parties, you know, in oppositions, you know, substantially demonstrated that no, that's not going to be there? Or has the applicant clearly shown through all their different options that there'll be water there to mitigate their pumping impacts?
Well, as I say, and I can say yes on this, seeing the big picture and knowing that they're, you know, the plan that is presented to us is going to be good for stream flows.
Okay, so I have two yeses and one no.
And, you know, the, the further thing I'd, I'd ask is, you know, how do you even turn a groundwater right into in-stream water? I mean, you know, legally, procedurally, within the structure of rights? And I mean, that's, I think where the, the whole cancellation in lieu of mitigation comes from. But, but if the question is, you know, is the proposed mitigation water going to be permanently protected in stream? I don't think you can say yes.
All right. So issue 12, so this is the last before we go back to nine, is do the applicant's proposed FMP conditions 38 and 40 ensure ongoing compliance with the no net loss standard? So for background, condition, FMP condition 38 was established to ensure that the no net loss standard was met under the 2008 FWMP and the other wildlife mitigation plans the resort has to implement. And after the hearings officer's decision denying the request, the applicant has provided two proposed revised conditions 38, which are listed in the matrix, and we'll go through those in a second. And they've also proposed a new condition 40, and that's to incorporate their 2022 FWMP. I would propose, I mean, I can go through these, you know, I can read these, I can kind of highlight the key changes. But staff does have some concerns specifically about condition 40. This was added as part of the applicant's final legal argument, and it specifically talks to what the resort's obligations are if they want to make changes in the future. And they are requesting that this new condition 40 would allow them to make further changes to the FWMP as part of a site plan or tentative plan approval process. And staff is generally not supportive of that, given the complexity, as we all can see under today's, you know, deliberations, of grouping that in with or allowing that to be as part of, you know, a subdivision plat or a site plan approval for their, you know, one of their recreation facilities. Staff believes that should be a separate review process, that doesn't necessarily have to be reviewed at the same time as something, you know, that's generally a more straightforward review. In addition, some of the language in that speaks to changes in the source of water or mitigation, and I think that's beyond the scope of what's before us in this request. I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, no, I, I, I also would like to flag this second sentence in the proposed condition that, that, you know, that, and it kind of, actually, I was just looking through my.
Were you talking about 40?
Yes, proposed condition 40. This kind of, in some ways, circles us back to issue eight, where we were talking about excess mitigation and whether there'd be a separate land use approval or if they can just go with excess mitigation. So it's, it's almost like this second sentence in proposed condition 40, if included, it would give them the green light to change the source while they're in a third party, or sorry, not third party, third stage development. So if that is excluded, you know, I think what, what we're talking about here with staff, what would be expected is that they would have to, again, go through a, like, this, this proceeding, you know, and update the FWMP once again, if you're going to change the source of water or mitigation. Don't just wrap that into, you know, a site plan review or, or, or other type of thing. Did I, did I capture that right?
Yeah, exactly.
Good, perfect. So, so it's, it's a matter of, you know, is it, can it be part of land use, future land use application, or does it have to be standalone like this one was?
So maybe breaking this up a little bit, so condition 38 says there's a 2008 plan and the addendum, and then the 2020 plan, so we're going to abide by all that and then provide an annual report to the county. And then the first part of 40 says the report basically shall include the items from, was it section two or whatever? Yeah, section two. So I mean, they kind of go together at that point, and then, but then that next sentence is where it jumps.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that adds a new.
Yep.
A whole new element that's, again, just came in recently. I'm just touching on the changes for condition 38 further to expand. The reason they have excluding the April 21st, 2008 FWMP addendum to that plan and its addenda, that's speaking to the, that was the old plan, so they, they want to make sure that's clear they're not obligated in any way to, to go, to operate under that. And just again, breaking that out of condition 38 and now separating it into a new condition 40.
Well, so I, I can support proposed 38 and the first half of 40 to start with. I mean, if that, that's helpful, then maybe we can break this out and talk about the rest of it.
So Stephanie, you're happy then with the applicant's final argument then for condition 38?
For condition 38, yes. It clarifies that there, you know, essentially that the 2022 FWMP is replacing the bulk of that 2008 plan. So when it says it shall, shall abide by the April 2008 Wildlife Mitigation Plan, excluding, you know, so the excluding part in parentheses really is, is where this new plan comes in to replace that.
Okay, and is, is that enough wording to say an annual report to the county?
The second sentence says, consistent with the plan, Thornburg shall submit an annual report to the county detailing mitigation activities that have occurred over the past year.
That's enough detail.
So condition 38's been litigated by the courts and, I don't know, probably seven or eight cases now. So I think we have direction on what, what that means. And I believe we, by opening it and changing that, we would likely have further appeals on, you know, a new language.
No, I just wanted to be sure that it covered it, you know, in reading this, they were saying, okay, what if something actually was shut down? How long would it be till the county would know?
Right.
Unless you were on the, you know, you were notified.
True, true.
OWRD, like I said, okay, we're going to let you guys, you know, Deschutes County know at the same time when we do something. Okay.
Right, so that, the, the annual reporting is on Thornburg. But, but yeah, the, the point that you raised there is, you know, what, what could happen in that, you know, you know, let's say they annually report on December 1st, you know, and something happens over the next 12 months, you know? Yeah, I mean, this, this, this only requires the annual report. Certainly, any applicant or property owner could go beyond that, but, you know, if you're going to look at this, if you're going to look at this approval in the future and say, hey, you're not complying with your condition of approval, that's when there would be an argument there. You know, and I can imagine, you know, letter of this, letter of the condition and the spirit of the condition. You know, and I can imagine, you know, letter of this, letter of the condition and the spirit of the condition, and, you know, I can imagine all sorts of arguments that attorneys would make. But for what that's worth.
Thank you.
And I want to make, make it clear that the applicant's FWMP does not have monitoring. They're just proposing this reporting, this annual reporting. So that was one of the things that, you know, I know ODFW and I believe the tribe as well, and maybe even appellate Gould, they're saying that it should be monitored, not just an annual report, and that's not what the FWMP requires. And that's, that ties back to condition 40 where they speak to the section two. That's just the reporting requirements.
Well, when it comes to water use and a, a quasi-municipal well, groundwater pumping, my understanding there's going to be measurement at that well. I guess I'm just trying to think through this. Is there confirmation of that, the water, water use should be measured, Oregon Water Resources? Because a domestic exempt well is, is not required for measuring water.
Yeah, so they'll have to.
This quasi-municipal will.
Yeah, so they'll have to have a meter on their well. So I think that that is what the reporting will provide, is how much water they're pumping. And then they'll provide how much mitigation is in place to offset those impacts.
Well, and that measured water will be part of Oregon Water Resources authorization. So if it's out of compliance, it will be out of compliance in Water Resources world, a state agency. So it's not for us to go double-check their, their water usage. I mean, I'm supportive of annual reporting, but if they work outside the agreements, there's big trouble.
That's not even, I, I don't think that's even what the monitoring would evaluate. I mean, we, anybody, I think anybody could just go and look at records in the Oregon Water Resource Department and understand how much water they're taking out of the ground. But what we're trying to understand is what impacts does that have on, on fish and wildlife habitat nearby and also on nearby residents' wells? You know, like, how is that change, how is that changing groundwater depths in a localized way or not? And that's, that would be one of the reasons why I think it would be appropriate for, for monitoring to be done.
But it's water res, it's Water Resources authority.
Water Resources doesn't do that. They don't do that monitoring.
But, so I would conclude it's not our authority. And, and I mean, I'm sensitive to this water issue also. But for Deschutes County to say, okay, because of this land use, we're going to do, make big policy decisions about water in our basin, even though the state does it, but they don't do what we want them to do. I mean, I don't go down that path.
The no-net loss standard is our policy. So if we want to actually, we actually want to know that it's being, that a standard is being met, you don't know unless you're measuring stuff.
And so to clarify, Commissioner Devone, it sounds like this is something that's, you know, of interest to you, which is, the report's just going to say, do they have the necessary mitigation water to support their pumping? Monitoring would be looking at, does their actual mitigation meet the no-net loss standard? Is it having the intended effect? So that, that's where the nuance comes in and the, I guess, terminology of monitoring versus reporting. Reporting's just looking at the numbers, which, exactly as you described, that's primarily Oregon Water Resource Department function. And the applicant's arguing that their models and everything clearly demonstrate that they don't need that ongoing monitoring and that it, you know, they have sufficient technical evidence to demonstrate that it will be met and it doesn't necessitate, you know, some other higher level of monitoring.
I just wanted to draw the, the board's attention to exhibit B, which is the Fish and Wildlife Mitigation Plan Addendum II. So if you go to pages 10 and 11 in particular, page 10, section D, details compliance. So it's like what constitute, they're, they're going through what constitutes compliance with the 2022 FWMP. And it's talking about how it's different for water appropriate, water appropriated from a surface water point of diversion versus a groundwater, and it goes through all this detail. But, and, and, and I certainly, you know, wanted to draw your attention to that. But on page 11, midway down the page, it says reporting. And it has nine items that, on which reporting is required to Deschutes County with a copy to ODFW's local field office. And it goes through all the information that's, that's going to be reporting. But, you know, as, as staff mentioned, you know, monitoring or determining no-net loss, that kind of gets back to one of Commissioner Chang's questions was, you know, temporal. You know, like, maybe they meet no-net loss in the first year or two or 10, you know. But that's kind of outside the, the scope of, of, of this, you know. I mean, because if the code doesn't say that we have to, or that an applicant has to show no-net loss for at least 25 years, then, you know, that, that would be adding something new into the code. But I just did want to bring that to your attention, that as far as monitoring and, yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, what the content of those reports will be.
Got it.
Well, yeah, so I guess, you know, this is, as I say, I support proceeding once again. So now we need to figure out 38 and 40. I mean, give clear guidance about what the words are we going to accept in this scenario. Commissioner Derr, do you have thoughts on that?
I just wanted to be sure that we didn't have anything imprecisely worded, like the hearing officer had designated for condition 38. Has it been cleaned up so that there's no, there's, we cannot call this an understatement? I mean, I think it's incredibly important.
And can you, can I just, can you just remind me again? So the existing condition 38 has been thoroughly litigated and, and kind of upheld by the courts?
Yeah, so it's been raised to the courts what that, those reporting requirements include. I'm not, I'm not currently, like, I don't have all that developed in my head on what the, you know, guiding conclusions were from those, but it has been litigated. That's not to say that we, you know, the board cannot change this to provide more direction. It's just, there is some direction from the appellate courts on how to interpret that language.
Well, so getting to, you know, so maybe starting at the beginning here. So this is a Fish and Wildlife Management Plan. We have certified experts talking about how this is going to benefit. No-net loss standard, possibly improvements in the whole basin for, for the moving parts it touches, utilizing the water rights that it's proposed. And we're going to get an annual report, is what these conditions provide us. So then the annual report is just a piece of paper that says we did this last year, but they are following this Fish and Wildlife Management Plan.
Right.
So then, just like we're saying, 10, 20, 50 years from now, it'll be interesting to see what happens over time, because who knows exactly what's going to happen? But, I mean, I do come to the conclusion that with the, you know, the plan proposed, we're going to get annual, annual reporting. So ongoing compliance with the no-net loss standard, that's just up for interpretation. I guess maybe that's why, you know, there's two, two reasonable people with generally the same information to come to different conclusions on that. So that's why, I guess, why I'm stuck here. It's going to be interesting to see, well, that could be debated for the rest of time. So for Deschutes County's no net loss standard, I do support saying, yes, we can proceed to the next issue, knowing this is temporal. I mean, I guess maybe that's the same conclusion, you know, so we, we, sometimes we're seeing it differently, but, yeah, who knows what it's going to look like 20 years from now? But we'll have an annual report for 20 years and it'll show us what's evolved and changed.
Well, I do like the reporting, the requirement, you know, nine specific questions on what must be answered annually. I think a lot of times in water in this state, we don't really get the feedback that we should have. And this is clearly going to give us feedback on what the impact is and, you know, how's the modeling worked? So I'm a yes.
And I say yes also.
And so, just for clarification, so yes to adopting the applicant's proposed revised FMP condition 38 that they submitted as part of the applicant's final argument? And then for condition, new condition 40, are you wanting to adopt one of the two of the applicant's submittals? The first is the one that staff is recommending the board approve, which is proposed new FMP condition 40, February 1st, 2023.
The one the staff came up with, I think, is a lot more appropriate for this case.
And I support that also. So we're not going to add the second sentence in there. I support that. There we go.
All right, so we're going to go back up to issue nine. Oops, sorry.
Did we all hit our microphones?
This is big paper.
But it's easier to, thank you.
Easy to read.
Yes.
All right, so in light of that discussion, does the board find that the 2022 FWMP ensures ongoing compliance and sufficient monitoring?
So it's easy, now that I've talked through that whole thing, I support it's sufficient monitoring. Ongoing, ongoing compliance, as I say, it's a plan and it, it will be complied to. So, you know, I kind of backed myself into saying yes here, but it has to be, it has to be complied to.
It's critical.
So then, because we just worked through sufficient monitoring?
No.
So we're moving on to issue 13 now, so we're back to page 139 of the packet. And the question is, does the applicant's proposal impact the water availability criteria in the CMP and FMP? And so the destination resort zoning standards in Deschutes County have a provision that states that the resort has to have adequate water available for all proposed uses at the destination resort. And it has additional language there, I could read that if you'd like. But the applicant through this request would be, you know, changing some of the water sources and not just relying on that water right G17036, but now, you know, moving towards these transfers or potentially obtaining a new water right. And so the question is, is does the applicant's proposal impact the water availability criteria or not? The applicant argues that this has been settled by Luba and that this is not a change or have any effect on the review of those criteria. I'm trying to think what else would I, anything else that you'd want to point out here?
Yeah, no, you just mentioned, yeah, the applicant is, is, has argued that the issue is settled and that water is available. That's, that's their argument. And then, yeah, I think everything else, yeah.
And I'll note too, that one of the issues that regularly gets discussed here is, it talks about, under this criteria, what is the source of water for the resort? And the applicant argues it's the aquifer. It's, it's not any particular water right. And opponents have argued the opposite. They say, no, the source of the water is, you know, associated or tied to this water right. And so it'd be very helpful to get direction on whether or not the board finds that the water source or availability is tied to any singular water right verse if it's broadly, you know, just groundwater, the, the regional aquifer as, as, as the source. And the board, sorry.
So the question says, does the applicant's proposal, are we referring to the FWMP?
Yeah.
So this, this process, this document, the proposal, what does proposal mean?
Well, their proposal is to modify an aspect of its final master plan approval, namely, the mitigation measures found in its Fish and Wildlife Management Plan.
This doc, making sure we're talking about.
That's, yeah, not the, you know.
And through this document, again, they're changing the water rights that they're relying on, right? Or they could, if G17036 becomes canceled, they will be able to use this, this approval to rely on those new water rights.
On that last question, I don't think we can, we can say the water source is just generally the aquifer. You know, this isn't, this is not an exempt well. This is a quasi municipal water supply. And to have, you know, to extract water from the ground or to divert water from a stream for such a, a user, you need to have a water right. So I, I think that they need to demonstrate that there is a, you know, some bundle of water rights that are, that are providing the supply for Thornburg.
Well, and that's exactly the conclusion I come to. I mean, that water right needs to be, you know, true and in their name and available for quasi municipal and the, the use is provided. So, yeah, I mean, does the applicant's proposal impact water availability? Yeah, I mean, I guess it's terminology, because, because I would conclude no, so we can proceed. Does this mean that we're not going to have any finding on this topic? Is it?
Well, I, I would say, yes, we, we need a finding. And, and the finding is, is, is Deschutes County Code 18113070K, which, which requires this. Adequate water will be available for all proposed uses at the destination resort. So if you're saying yes, then you're finding that based on the evidence and the record.
So, I mean, I come, I got to have the right to be able to use it.
Right.
I just, I have a question on the second page, Caroline. Central Oregon Land Watch, it says 2002 FWMP application in that paragraph, isn't that 22? Okay, I just, I was thinking like, no, this was, we didn't have this before.
No, 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 sorry.
No, that's okay. That was like.
Yeah, sorry about that. I would say that the finding, your finding would also be that it's, we would expand or the decision should expand to state that the board finds that the resort has to have water rights to support their water use. It's not just.
Yeah, so this is, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll write down whatever needs to be written down, but we all agree that you need to be legally using the water that you have rights to.
Critical factor.
And so votes across here, I don't know if this is even, do we want a yes-no vote? Or is this just more nuanced?
Yeah, yeah.
Correctly described the decision options.
As I say, I mean, my conclusion is to proceed with the.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, yeah, I mean, because I think that, yes, it does impact, I mean, I would argue that, yes, it impacts water availability. But unless you can find that, you know, that there will not be adequate water based upon the water study and proposed water conservation plan.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I, I need to step back, because I just, this is going to be important if we don't fully understand the issue here. And I don't think I've done a robust enough job here. So as part of the adequate water and availability question, they have to submit a water study and these other documents. So if the board is finding that this does impact the water availability criteria, the resort would have to provide more information, because they would have to submit a new water study, in, in theory. And that's what the opponents are arguing here. So we, if we were to find, or if the board, excuse me, was to find that this impacts the water availability criteria, this would open up a whole new set of standards that the applicant would have to address before they could proceed with implementing the FWMP that's before you.
Can you look at it? They were given water rights for a greater quantity in 2008. And so now they're actually using 30% less. And if the state was doing its job, they would have known that that amount of water was okay at that time. But now they're asking for, you know, quite a bit less water. Is that any kind of logic?
So if I understand, would that be like stating that because they're reducing the water use, that the water study would not need to be redone?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm just.
And, and, and maybe, let me try to pick up here. It sounds like you're paraphrasing one of the applicant's arguments, which is in the, in the matrix here. The applicant says that the resort doesn't have new plans for its water supply. You know, we don't have new plans for water. It's agreeing to reduce its water use. have new plans for water. It's agreeing to reduce its water use, as you just said, Commissioner Adair, but it's still obtaining water from the regional aquifer. And that gets back to what Caroline was saying earlier. What is the source of the water? Is the source of the water these individual permits? Or is the source the regional aquifer? That's, you know, that kind of, you know, I don't know if I would even say it's chicken and egg, but it kind of seems like it. It's only requesting approval to rely on additional water rights to allow water to be pumped at the resort. So, that's, that's how, that's how the applicant has framed this. And in response, you know, we've got appellant Gould arguing that the water supply requires resiliency, which means that the resort has a water supply with the water available for a minimum of 10 years. That's, she's, she is arguing that, you know, is there a showing that we have water supply or that the resort has water supply for 10 years? And that's where some of these questions around the temporary, the temporary transfers, which could allow for five years and no automatic or available extensions. And Caroline, you've done a really good job, you know, putting the various arguments in, which, you know, like I said earlier, you know, the board gets to weigh all of these arguments and the evidence to decide what finding you're going to make on this issue.
So, am I tracking correctly that we are asking, are we, are we asking, do you have a plan for water supply or not? Or are we asking, are your plans for water supply sound? I mean, is that, is...
I think, I think, I think that's, yeah, I think that's...
Hard, is that hard?
Part of what the criteria is trying to address. And so, I think the applicant would argue that they still have their G17036 to rely on. And so, the board, for example, could find that because they have that as an option still on the table and these additional water rights, that they continue to comply with their original water supply plan, to the extent they go to change it, the board could, you know, suggest that they need to come in and apply for a modification of that plan if they're going to only rely on those water rights, if you believe that would be necessary. I mean, that would be one way to finesse that, that issue and still allow for the reduction in water use and to keep this kind of as this whole separate issue and move forward with an approval.
Mm-hmm, right, right. I agree.
Well, as I say, in the big picture, you know, getting this plan approved, as I say, that's where I'm leaning, is going to give some certainty to the applicant to be able to go to the Water Resources Department, say, okay, I've got this suite of options here. Which ones are you going to approve? Because that'll be in the package of water to be utilized. Commissioner Adair, you mentioned, you know, one golf course, because there was three in the, you know, the, the planning phases. Optional could be two or even one. And a golf course could be a simple links course opposed to a big green fairway, too. So, there's all kinds of ways that water could be used here. So, getting this landed is going to be a reference point to make all those decisions. So, yeah, I think there's, there's opportunity for water availability. So, this proposal, as I say, does not impact the criteria of water can be available. So, I, it's good that we're talking it out. You know, hopefully, we'll, we'll see it in words here pretty soon when we get to a written decision.
Do you have clear direction on...
I do, I do. And, and I did want to make one more comment, and this isn't pro any party, but the board gets to decide based on the facts before it right now, you know, and making assumptions or presumptions or any of that is not evidentiary. And so, if, if, if the board's decision is based on the fact that, that G17036 is valid and not canceled, you know, if the board was to say, hey, well, you know, it could be in the future, that's kind of a presumption, you know?
Oh, yeah, understood.
And so, you know, but, but, you know, getting back to like conditions of approval, you know, we have direction on, you know, if staff has direction on, on that, you know, if this, then this, you know, then, then, you know, we can kind of accommodate, you know, mitigate, if you will, the, the future, to some extent.
Well, yeah, so a simple statement is, you know, does availability at the CMP/FMP criteria, does it impact it? The answer's going to be no. I mean, yeah, so, let's proceed.
I mean, I guess, in, in this whole process, I have concerns about what impacts Thornburg's water supply may have on local fish and wildlife habitat, but I, I'm not that concerned that they're going to figure out how to get water to supply their resort. I mean, so, is that...
So, that would be a no?
I think that means, that makes me a no?
A no is so that we may approve it.
Yeah.
We've got the major grant, the water permit, and then they, those three other optional ones down below, BC and D. Yeah, they definitely have, they've been definitely working on this, the capacity.
Issue 14, and we're nearing the end, so 17 issues total, and the last one's quite easy. I think it should be straightforward at least. But, Issue 14, is Thornburg CMP approval, or CMP approval void? And opponents have argued, Central Oregon Land Watch has argued that the CMP has become void. There was a declaratory ruling process through the county back in, I think, 2011-ish, where the resort was attempting to obtain an approval to say that they've initiated the approvals authorized under the CMP. That process was not finalized, but despite that, you know, the resort has moved forward with attaining more recent site plan approvals and tentative plan approvals that the courts have affirmed. And the hearings officer found that the CMP is not void and that their, the resort can continue to move forward with development as authorized under the CMP. So, the question from the board is, do you find that the Thornburg CMP is void or not?
No.
No.
That's correct. No. I mean, that's my opinion also, sorry. I was going to say more, but I just kept it at that point, yeah.
This will be a longer one. So, Issue 15 is, is the applicant's proposal a substantial change? And I want to note, I've pulled two instances in which substantial change is used. There's some other instances, like in our modification procedures, that use similar but slightly different language. These are, I think, the most complicated ones, so that's why they're before the board. So, the Destination Resort Modification Section for modifications of a conceptual master plan set out standards for when an applicant has to apply for a modification. And that all hinges on whether that requested modification is a substantial change. And in this section, this modification section for the Destination Resort zone, it defines a substantial change as an alteration in the type, scale, location, phasing, or other characteristic of the proposed development, such that the findings effect on which the original approval was based would be materially affected. So, I'm going to stop there and talk about what the hearings officer found before moving on to the second instance in which substantial change is used. But, the hearings officer found that the FWMP mitigation water sources, or change to that, is a substantial change under that code section. And the basis of that was, hearings officer found that the sources of the mitigation water would be a characteristic of the proposed development, i.e. the Thornburg Resort, and that proposed changes would materially affect the findings related to the FWMP. And that any change would, would impact or implicate the FMP, or I should say, any change to the FMP by changing the FWMP necessarily implicates the CMP. And I am so sorry, that's very wordy. But, in other words, he, he found that all three of those things are linked. You can't untie them because it is a characteristic of the Thornburg Resort. The applicant is arguing that these are not defined as substantial changes. It's not a characteristic under that, that modification section and cannot be considered a substantial change. So, that's part one of this question. The second part is, the conceptual master plan and final master plan have conditions of approval, and Condition 1 for both of those documents states that approval is based upon the submitted plan. Any substantial change to the approved plan will require a new application. The hearings officer found that the modification application was sufficient to be a new application, and so the applicant had met their burden under Conditions 1 of the FMP and CMP. The applicant, or sorry, the appellant Gould argues that, and others, I should say, also argue, that new application means the resort needs to start with a new conceptual master plan and then a new final master plan, and they can't just come in for a modification because of this, this request is a substantial change under Condition 1. The applicant argues that the courts have already been presented with this argument, not, and this is not, you know, this is not something to be argued again. And, I'm trying to remember anything else on that. The applicant states... I think that covers everything, at least for initial. I know I've been talking for a while, so I'll pause there and, and answer questions as needed.
So, looking at the hearings officer's conclusion, this was a reason for denial or not? I mean, because it kind of goes back and forth. It says this, this, and this, and then not a substantial...
It was just a, it was a basis for what standards to apply to the review. If it's not a substantial change of the CMP, it's not clear how we get back to the no net loss standard, is my understanding of the hearings officer's analysis.
Could you say that again?
So, the no net loss standard is an approval criterion of the conceptual master plan process. The applicant, and this is, more is coming back to me. So, the applicant's argument is that for the Thornburg Resort, the no net loss standard was deferred, the review of the no net loss standard was deferred to the final master plan approval stage. For that reason, they're not modifying their CMP. And so, the hearings officer was incorrect in that finding, is what the applicant's argument is, because there, because it wasn't evaluated into the FMP stage, it couldn't be a modification of the CMP for Thornburg's approval.
Well, and then, FMP slash, or CMP/FMP is used all over here, too, so...
And that's part of, I think that might be one of the next issues. Well, maybe we didn't get into that. Well, there's arguments about whether they're separate documents or not, which is, I don't know if you want to dive into that or not.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Excuse me?
If they were actually adding a golf course to, let's say they had two, they had one and they wanted to make it two, they felt like, you know, the situation warranted it, wouldn't that be considered a substantial change? But, here we're saying that elimination is not a substantial change, because we were, we are actually taking something away.
And, and the hearings officer agreed with that.
Right.
He found that a reduction is not a substantial change, but the substantial change in this case was changing the sources of the mitigation water. Because that, he found that to be a characteristic of the resort, of the Thornburg Resort.
Right.
Well, and with the clarification you just mentioned, conceptual master plan, here's a piece of land, we're going to do this on it conceptually. Final master plan, here's more detail, and you're putting in a Fish and Wildlife Management Plan that justifies, or, you know, backs up a no net loss standard. So, I would be able to conclude that, yeah, the CMP is not implicated by what you just said.
That's a no.
Correct. And I say no on that, yeah.
I mean, I guess I would, I would agree that proposed modification to the water sources is a substantial change to the CMP.
To the CMP, yeah.
Yeah, and, and under CMP/FMP Condition 1. I mean, the hearings officer's findings seem well reasoned on this.
And Commissioner DeBonan and Commissioner Adair, just to clarify, do you believe, under CMP/FMP Condition 1, approval is based on the submitted plan, any substantial change to the approved plan will require a new application? Are you also saying that it's not a substantial change under Condition 1 as well?
That's correct.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification. So, Issue 16, are the surrounding properties, when considering impacts associated with the modification request, limited to adjacent properties? So, in our procedures ordinance, our modification standards state that if someone's applying for a modification, there cannot be significant additional impacts, or cannot result in significant additional impacts on surrounding properties. So, in order to evaluate that criteria, the hearings officer established for this review, or not just this review, broadly, that the county should be interpreting that provision to apply to only adjacent properties for any modification request. And, so, this is a policy, not just that would apply to Thornburg unless the board adopted a different finding, that anytime another modification request comes into our office, we would only be looking at the adjacent, you know, abutting properties as properties that would be impacted by a modification request. You can imagine, we receive a wide range of modification requests, and different properties have different configurations or different abutting, you know, lands, whether it's our street, maybe it's a common space, you know, down in Sun River, Black Butte Ranch, and maybe just on the other side of that, there may actually be real impacts. But, under this interpretation, unless the board, again, adopts a different, more nuanced finding, which is what staff is recommending, it may limit how we would evaluate this, this modification requirement. So, staff in this case doesn't disagree with the hearings officer analysis that for this Thornburg modification request, adjacent properties is a reasonable interpretation for determining if there are any significant additional impacts. But, I, staff is recommending that the board kind of make a more nuanced finding here and state that it would be specific to the modification request and the subject property that the modification is specific to when we're determining those surrounding properties.
So, yeah, I support not locking us down in the future, you know, for future land use decisions. You know, this one is large property with, you know, not a lot of adjacent properties, you know, the number of properties, large parcels also. So, I, I mean, I support the, the staff's recommendation to, to let it evolve for each application, if that's a good terminology there, but yeah.
I wanted to make one comment as, as Assistant Legal Counsel. I can imagine that an applicant would, could complain about this not being an identifiable standard. Well, how big is that impact area? And is this, you know, I mean, so they could potentially, and I'm just, this is just out here for argument's sake. They could just say, well, you know, if the code had said a two-mile radius, then I, representing the applicant, would know, you know. But, so I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not saying, do it, don't do it. I, I actually tend to agree with, you know, that it could be case by case, but I'm also alerting the board that there could be some objection to it not being, you know, like I didn't have noticed that the standard was going to apply when I started planning this project.
When that happens, I mean, it would be really, it seems like it'd be really difficult to set some kind of specific number on this, because... It seems like it'd be very difficult to set a specific number on this, because the scale of the impacts depends on how big the straw is that's in the ground, right? If you're drawing a lot of water out of the ground, then you could have groundwater impacts on neighbors for a substantial distance, while if, you know, it's, I mean, I don't, you know, something just a little bit bigger than an exempt well, I mean, that may not have impacts very far at all. So, I, I agree, I, I think that this is just a real concern here, and as groundwater levels continue to... levels continue to decline, and we're seeing more and more conflict around water, and anger around water, I could see this being a, an issue that we need to add some clarity to, but I, I don't have a really good ideas on how you, how you would do that, and I just want to kind of raise that, that, that consideration, that, you know, how far the impacts go depends on how big the withdrawal is, and just kind of localized groundwater conditions.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in the, in the interest of kind of dealing with this issue better across the entire county, would you have any suggestions for me on how to respond to this, you know, to this specific question in this specific matrix?
Well, again, you know, kind of thinking about it outside of the context of Thornburg, but, you know, going down the line, and, and to be quite honest, it kind of comes, it even implicates this temporal, you know, I mean, like impacts today, impacts five years from now, I mean, there's, there's so much that's going to go into a determination of, of impacts, and, and, you know, even to be hyper-technical, you know, I mean, I would, I would say, you know, when we're talking impacts, we're talking negative impacts, right? We're not talking positive impacts, you know, but, you know, an argument could be made, a creative attorney could say, well, yeah, positive, like, this whole area is going to be positively impacted by the economic, you know, inflow of money, you know, I mean, there's, there's, wouldn't it be great if we could foresee every potential argument and, and impact and, you know, nuance down the road to set us up in a way that we were, you know, that the board is really well informed in, in seeing the extent of, you know, again, negative impacts on surrounding properties? And I, I mean, I, I, I agree with the comments made today, you know, I, I don't see how that could be a line drawn, you know, depending on the topography and, and the other, you know, the other uses in the area, I mean, there's so much that would go into it, I just, you know, I, I wish I had more for you. I mean, it's just kind of general observation and anticipating that there could be a, you know, an argument saying that this is not well enough to find, you know, just throwing that out there. And I don't have a fix for that.
So are we talking about notifying the community with, is that what we're, we're referring to?
It's a question of whether, considering impacts associated with the modification, are you only looking at adjacent properties, or is, or should it be broader?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're just talking about the impacts of this resort and what it's going to do?
Well, yes, but also, since the board is interpreting its, its code here, this will have a future, you know, people will look at this decision as a basis for, you know, how they.
Yeah, this is in the bigger scope of all, all land use.
This is a significant interpretation.
Yes.
Need to state that on the record.
Thank you.
This will have dramatic impacts on not just this application, but further, and I can see how both sides would have strong opinions about it.
Yes.
I just don't want to, just be quick to, this is, this is a major interpretation.
Thank you.
And in the specifics of how this, how this application is playing out, and how this development is playing out, I mean, have we received testimony or, or comments from nearby but not adjacent landowners who have expressed concern about their groundwater, their access to groundwater?
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's the appellant's, appellant Gould, a lot of her testimony speaks to that, is that there are wells outside of the adjacent area, but also outside of the well indemnification area, which is a two-mile radius, that are, are being impacted by the resort's water use, or will be when the resort starts pumping. So, their position is that surrounding properties, by just looking at adjacent properties for this, this specific modification is too limiting, because other wells will be impacted that are not adjacent to, or on properties that are not adjacent to Thornburg's property.
Well, for this, so for this, you know, the hearings officer finding was adjacent properties, but for the, the good of all of Oregon, Deschutes County's land use in our code, I could come to the conclusion of no, which means the modification request and subject property, each application will be defined as we've done previously.
And for this request, Commissioner DeBonan?
Adjacent properties.
Adjacent is, is, is the right, okay. Option one.
But to that, to that broader question, we wouldn't, we wouldn't consider surrounding properties as just adjacent. And I, I, I think that's what you said?
I'm sorry.
Right, you know, in the bigger picture, we wouldn't consider surrounding properties, just the adjacent properties.
Yeah, so each application could be different.
It's got to be specific.
I would, I would support that.
And then, so the second question for each, for Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Dare, is for this request, this modification request, do you find that the adjacent properties are appropriate when determining what the surrounding properties are, or do you believe some other metric should be used when defining what the surrounding properties are?
How, how close are the nearest non-adjacent properties?
I don't know that often, and I don't know if I can technically look that up, because it might not be in the record, but I can state that there are comments in the record from property owners that are not adjacent, that state they will be impact, or their wells will be impacted by this proposal.
Are they a mile away, do you think?
I know there, so I know there are comments in the record that state that property owners that are not within the two-mile radius, so there's a well indemnification agreement, that you, there's a couple of different conditions, you had to have a well that's been in place since, I think, the time the CMP approval took, took part, or took place, and then it's a two-mile radius. So there's property owners outside of that two-mile radius who are stating their wells are currently dropping, and they believe this proposal will result in additional significant impacts.
And then the, the, the properties that are covered by this indemnification, what is, what does that do for them?
I, I did take a look at the indemnification agreement form essentially, because it's, you know, the applicant, and once they're starting to draw the water, I think that's the triggering point, is to when they, they may enter into. And any property owner can say, no, I don't want, I don't want that agreement, I don't, I don't need to, I don't want it, I don't need it, you know, whatever. And it's been at least a month, I think, since I looked at that, so I don't have it in front of me right now, but, yeah, maybe, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of that plan, to be completely honest, I, it hasn't, people haven't, you know, drilled down on, on that issue.
Yeah.
It's an agreement that they make with Thornburg?
Yes.
But they have to be within two miles?
Mm-hmm, and have a well in place, I want to say since 2005, I don't know the year, that's approximately, that's not maybe the exact year, but it's in that range, a few years, within that range.
So you had to have a well that was in place at the time essentially of the application, or somewhere around that time. You know, I mean, I can, I can also comment that well indemnification agreement that a property owner can say no to, Thornburg has to offer it, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, like, like anything else, you know, they could go further, they could say, you know what, you know, based on the conditions that, you know, we're now seeing in 2023, we're going to offer it to everyone within three miles, and, and we're not going to limit it to those wells that were in existence in 2005. That's, you know, there's, but there's nothing that would require them to do that. So, again, kind of like what I was saying about speculating, you know, on other things, you know, there's, it's just, it is what it is, and, and right now, they're only, they're only required to offer it to those wells within two miles, and.
Was this set in the documents in 2006?
Yes, this is, well, it's a condition of approval.
Yeah, so, the, there were lots of comments at the time when the CMP was being reviewed about concerns about well impacts, so the resort voluntarily agreed to engage in this indemnification agreement. It ended up becoming a condition of approval to make sure it came to fruition, but they put that into their proposal, even though there wasn't a clear nexus in the code for the resort to have to do this.
Right.
But under the hearings officer's interpretation, we, we wouldn't even get to looking at impacts on those properties, so it wouldn't be clear, for example, if the board was thinking, oh, we could expand that to include other properties, that would not, I don't know what the nexus would be to require that if we believe, or, excuse me, the board believes the surrounding properties would be the adjacent properties that would be impacted by this modification request.
But that won't go into effect until the resort is actually functioning?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So if their well went dry in 2020, that's, okay.
Yep.
And, so within that two-mile radius, there wasn't any testimony submitted by people who are concerned about their wells?
You know, I, I would need to probably look at the record more closely to answer that. I mean, we're approaching lunch, so if there was interest, I can go back and, and look through the record, but there are, there are, I know Ms. Gould's attorney submitted, you know, a long list of properties that have had to lower, or, you know, dig a deeper well, and so I could look at where those properties are located, but I don't know off the top of my head how far they are, for example.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, my, my concern about this is, is that, there, there are a lot of people in our community who are overestimating what impact new groundwater withdrawals are going to have on their, on their groundwater access. You know, we know from Oregon Water Resources Department's analysis that declining groundwater levels, five-eighths of the reason is drought, we just have not been getting as much precipitation as, as, in the last few years, as historically we have. Another two, you know, another two eighths, two eighths of that is from, is, is from, like, localized impacts of, localized impacts, or, sorry, I can't actually, two eighths, one eighth, there's the localized impacts of canal piping projects, and then there is, there is some very localized impacts of, you know, too many straws in the ground in my neighborhood, but the majority of the, the decline in groundwater is really just about drought, and, and I think that a lot of people are attributing that to their neighbors, or neighboring, neighboring wells, when it's, it's, it's an act of God, basically, it's, you know, it, you can't blame your neighbor for that necessarily. So, yeah, so I, I mean, that, that affects how I would view the, the question of somebody who's outside that two miles, you know, they, they may, they, I'm sure that they, if they're experiencing, if, if they think that they're, that the groundwater is declining in their area, that it is, but what the cause of that is, is, is what they, you know, what, I'm, I'm concerned that a lot of people are not attributing the right proportionality of causes to groundwater declines, and, and I wouldn't want to just feed that, feed those attitudes.
And that's certainly what the applicant, they're not responsible for mitigating everything that's happening in the basin, they're responsible for mitigating their impacts, so they're not responsible for mitigating the drought, or whatever else might be happening, canal piping, et cetera.
Well, are we going to break for lunch, or are we?
We've got one more decision. We, I bet we can make that last one real quick.
Yes, but I, I need a vote.
Said no on that one.
On the option, though, for this modification request, do you find that the adjacent properties is an appropriate designation for what the surrounding properties are, or do you believe it should be something else?
I think it's a specific no, specific to the modification.
Okay, and then for this, for this particular one, do you agree with the hearings officer, that the adjacent properties are reasonable?
I can agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would want to know more. I might be able to get to yes, but I would want to know more, so if, if we're not going to take a break, then I'm going to say no.
Yeah, that's fine. As I say, we'll, we'll go back and review how this can do. So let's get to 17.
All right, so 17, this is a procedural question, again, which will impact future reviews. It's not that relevant for this review, because there was a second hearings process, so anyone presumably would have had an opportunity to be notified through the second notice for the board's hearing, but in our procedures ordinance, there is a requirement that the notice for the initial hearing has to be published in a newspaper at least 20 days prior to the hearing. In the previous, the initial hearing in front of the hearings officer for this review, the 20th day fell on the date of the hearing, and the hearings officer found that that did not comply with our procedures ordinance, and so, in other words, the 20th day cannot fall for that interpretation on the date of the hearing, it's, you know, needs to be mailed out 21 days in advance. So the question for the board is, do you agree with the hearings officer's interpretation that the 20th day cannot fall on the same date as the hearing, or, as the applicant's arguing that the 20th day could fall, and that meets our procedural obligation?
I agree with the hearings officer.
And do we have to decide on this? I mean, if, if, if this, if this process is, is adequately noticed, then do we, why, what, do we need to even comment on this?
It will be helpful for us, because we'll have other hearings, and so it will help staff understand what the obligation is, and it also, you know, it gives the board a clear, you know, finding if this goes on a luba, and they were saying, who gets deference on this issue, it may be that if this isn't tied to state, state law, that they would say the board could, could interpret this provision.
Okay. I support 20 days, and then a hearing on the 21st day, so respecting the word prior. Yes.
Okay. All right, so, do we want to move to the motion and get, get, I have like two more things on my list, that, not matrix things, but steps we need to walk through.
Yeah.
They should be short, I think.
Yeah, let's finish this up. We have people following this, and I'm sure that this will be.
So I handed out proposed motions, or recommended motions, to the board, so based on what we just went through, the matrix, the majority vote on each of the issues would result in an approval, so option would would be the recommended motion to support the discussion or deliberations that just took place.
So, does each one need to be made separately?
I'll defer to county.
Well, and I admitted to staff that I'm, I'm not the best on Robert's Rules of Order, you know, I, I mean, I know just enough about, like, election law to say, well, you can't, you can't have two subjects in one, you know.
I'm sure it'll be fine either way.
Yeah, I think so. So, one by one.
One by one.
Let's just be extra careful.
Yes, 100%.
No, that was her recommendation.
Okay, so, I move to affirm the applicant's appeal, appeal number 247-22-00094-A.
And I will second it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And chair votes yes. So please proceed.
Okay, I move to approve the applicant's request to modify its final master plan approval, file number 247-22-000678MC.
And I will second it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And chair votes yes.
I move to revise FMP condition 38, and add a new FMP condition 40, as decided at today's deliberations.
And I will second it.
I think I could second.
Oh, okay, okay. Please do that.
Based on the, what, what, what question was that the answer to?
12, I believe.
This, this motion is really specific to that, that question, correct?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that is, that is issue 12, and Commissioner Chang, you voted yes when we were.
There we go.
Working through the matrix.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
Okay. So we're now at the last one. I move to deny the appeal by Nancy Gould, appeal number 247-23-000003-A. Do I need a proper name?
Oh, I would say yes.
Anansi Atta? Is that very close? Or is that way off?
There you go. Well, we understand. So the appeal number 3A. So with that, I will second it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And chair votes yes. So a written decision will follow, but yeah, that's our.
Yeah, that's my last bullet note for myself, which is the 150th day ends on April 10th, which is a Monday. So that would be.
That's Monday we're not here.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's AOC day.
Good, we're connecting.
Well, we will need to work with the applicant to either get the decision drafted very quickly or ask for an extension from Brenda on the agenda submittal potentially, or get a, did I already say an extension? I'm sorry. My brain's.
No extension.
Turned a mush. But either an extension, we'll get it done quickly, or get a late agenda submittal. But we'll need to work with the applicant. So we'll look for the Wednesday prior meeting to put this before the board for a final decision.
Is that the sixth?
The fifth?
The fifth, okay.
A week from today.
Today.
Or, yeah, I mean, just like you mentioned, an extension, since there's a path to what we're doing here, maybe possible.
Yeah. And we'll definitely go to the applicant and request that.
Okay.
And if possible, we'll go that route.
Anything else?
No.
We've completed it.
I have a couple of things. Number one, there was language in the draft, final legal, what is it called?
Your final legal argument, the applicant's final legal.
The final legal argument where, where actually a piece that I, a guest column I wrote in the, for the bulletin was mentioned. And I guess if that, I guess, I would just say that if that is going to be mentioned, I would like, I would like the opinion or the argument to also emphasize that I, in that guest column, I said that nobody should be wasting water, that efficient use of water use is really important. And I don't necessarily know that this is, this is the most efficient use of water. That could be, that could be pursued. And, you know, I did also, I said that the domestic, residential, and municipal water use in the basin is a lot smaller than the agricultural demand, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I believe that using 1,460 acre feet of water per year for a development, a community of this size is not significant in the grand scheme of water use in the basin. The other, the other thing that I was quoted, or they were kind of paraphrased, that I'd like to clarify was that, is that Oregon land use law and the land use process provides the county with limited tools to address drought, not, not everybody with limited tools to address drought. And just in the bigger, the big, big picture, I would like to say that this fish and wildlife mitigation plan, they may very well be a significant improvement for fish and wildlife habitat over the 2008 plan. I just wish that the applicant would build the relationships and do some of the work to, to get other people to a place where they could say the same thing, where they could, where they could validate that. And I do think that, you know, doing modeling work with, you know, with other, with entities like the tribes or ODFNW kind of in the, you know, part of the group, modeling group, as opposed to, you know, kind of put on the outside of that process. I do believe that, you know, monitoring and documentation could provide those assurances. And I do believe that, you know, doing, doing things like setting up, you know, permanent in-stream water rights could settle down a whole, a whole lot of people's concerns about pieces of this, this plan. So while I'm, while I am voting essentially consistently with the, with the hearings officer's findings, and I would like us to reject this appeal, I do think that there's, there's potential in this plan to arrive at something that's better for fish and wildlife than the 2008 plan. And I would just encourage the applicants to do the work to prove that up.
Thank you.
There was one thing, I know there were some typos on the FWMP.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So thank you very much. That was kind of a post-it. So if you, yeah, if you read it with a, you know, critiquing the fine eye, just a few little typo things. And it's kind of a mutable document that has been handed to us by the applicant. So, because I asked that question, well, does somebody want to make a little typo fix here? And we could make that a condition to go through for Scrivener's errors and typos, correct? I mean, that's what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that. I just also wanted to, you know, caution that, you know, it's not a free, it should not be free latitude to wordsmith and kind of, you know, like, well, I didn't really change what that meant. I just, you know, changed a couple of things, you know. So it would be literally, I think you're safest to allow literal, just typo or grammatical.
I had like five of them. That's why I was like, oh, I'd.
If the applicant does that, they need to present like a red line change.
Yes.
Identify clearly what they are changing.
Well, and we might, I mean, we might even take time and just say, you know, one, two, three, four, or five on a piece of paper. And then these are, these would be proposed typo corrections, you know, because there's no latitude at all, as I say, I can provide the ones I saw. If you want to do that. So how would we do that?
Good question.
I mean, this is a.
Well, I think, first of all, the board has to make a motion and move as to whether this is something that, that, you know, that we would ask maybe as part of.
Yeah.
The preparation of the decision because.
This is going to go down in history as a document. May as well.
Right. Well, and it, and the FWMP is an exhibit, or would be an exhibit to the, an addendum to the, to the decision. So, you know, supporting your decision, you want an accurate, you know, not, not, not with grammatical.
So I'll mention a few things. So Deshute's River Conservancy was just, it says Deshute Resource Conservancy in one paragraph, and then the next one says River Conservancy. So just.
Yeah.
Probably spell corrected, and that's how it happened.
Yeah.
And there was another sentence that talked about justification for juniper. It talked about increase in European settlement in Oregon. And then that statement was repeated at the end of the paragraph also. So it was just probably maybe cut and paste from one point to the other, but it wasn't removed from the second half of this paragraph. So that's the kind of stuff I was talking about.
Do you mind running through those just on the record so we get that?
Okay, well, there's two of them, yeah.
And what pages?
Yep, if we want to, yeah. So document page six, our packet page 237, item F in the second sentence, it just says Deshute's Resource Conservancy. As I say, it was probably just an automatic spell check change. So this, yeah, so I'm not going to refer to something that's not just that. So as I say, page nine, packet page 240, under item seven, thin juniper forest on site. The second and third sentence really just says, well, I'll read it and then it can be fixed. Juniper is a native species that, with an increase in European settlement in Oregon, has increased substantially throughout Oregon as a result of increased human settlement within Oregon. So I'm sure it just could be cut in half, real simple.
Eliminating half of it.
And, well, so there may be not even be that many, so. This will be just a question if this was the right number, because the two numbers were put out. So page 20, packet page 251, talks about IMP in quotes to Oregon Water Resources Department. What's IMP? Do we know what that means? The IMP describes the proposed timing for meeting the mitigation.
Incremental migration.
Mitigation.
Mitigation.
For meeting the mitigation obligation for permit 17036, developing the 2,129 acre feet of water. Was that supposed to be the new number of 1460 was my question? So if it is or isn't, that can be kept. And then on the next page, page 21, I think maybe it was the first use of, it's kind of right in the middle of the page, in the second line of the paragraph in the middle of the page, NCI noted this is from 2015 to 17. So maybe just introducing NCI as an acronym. So those, and that's it. Yeah, so there, we did read it in the record, done.
Thank you. And that just offers clarity, so there's no.
Yep.
Question of what's being changed.
Right.
Good. With that, anything else? We've completed deliberations for today. Thank you very much, everybody. It's been a long meeting. We slipped into 1:00. We do have one executive session. We can take a break and come back, or possibly punt it to Monday. I mean, this is, if that's the only executive session.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, there's nothing else.
Those people?
Well, it's going to, but, unless you want to get together in a half hour at 1:30?
I do have two other.
Oh, yeah, so let's reconvene at 1:30 then. If, yeah, let's do that. So we'll take a half hour break. So we'll take a half hour break here.
Welcome back. This is our Board of Commissioners meeting after recessor. It's 1:30 PM now. And other items, so Nick, you had two specific items?
Two items. First, the Tower Theater asked if the county would like to provide a three and a half by five black and white ad for the Stage the Change program. The board partially funded the event through an arts and culture grant. If so, they're asking for the ad. They need to do the ad by a month and a half or three and a half weeks.
So this is something we already sponsored and paid for? They're just wanting to know?
Yes, another wanting to know if we want to do an ad that says something that we would support the event, something of that nature as well. So I don't know if you had a chance, I can...
I saw the email. Yeah, just...
Is there additional cost associated with that?
I don't think that Stephanie Robinson is currently watching, but I don't think so. I think it's just a matter of do we... And maybe because we have the ad, I can check with her.
I'd say yes, and I assume there's no other costs. It sounds like they're just offering to put a little thing in print.
Something for free?
Well, no, we already sponsored it by something.
I'll confirm that there's not... I didn't see an additional cost. I just received the request, and I know she's...
She just said we could provide it, so that's lovely.
Confirm with her. No other cost. She just replied immediately.
Yeah, okay, good.
So, perfect. And the second question, Commissioner Chang raised this question about the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project Steering Committee. There's a municipal member, given former Mayor Sally Russell's departure from the steering committee, to appoint or to, well, however that appointment works, but to appoint another member from the city. And Commissioner Chang had reached out to the city, so if I may, I can just turn it over to you to...
Yeah, be happy to explain. So there are two local government seats on the steering committee of the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project. Sally Russell held one, and she is not completely leaving the steering committee. She has been moved over, took a very long time, because she left the mayorship quite a while ago. But she's been moved over to an at-large seat, opening up a local government seat. I hold the other one. And so it's not a question of whether there'd be another county commissioner on the steering committee. It's really a question of which of our cities are we going to look to provide a new steering committee member. I have spoken to councilors at Sisters and Bend, and I spoke to the city manager and the mayor a little bit in Lapine. And the only person who really expressed interest in serving was Counselor Broadman, so, from the city of Bend. And I do think that a representative from the city of Bend might be appropriate and valuable, because a lot of the, a couple of the big initiatives that the Deschutes Collaborative needs to deal with in the next couple of years are, number one, smoke management, smoke output from prescribed fire if they want to do burns in the West Bend project area. So that's fairly Bend-specific. Most of the other communities, we can do prescribed fire in the immediate vicinity and get hundreds of acres done. But the air quality constraints around prescribed fire smoke have made it very difficult to get stuff done near Bend in that area. And then the second potential issue is that there's, the Forest Service wants to initiate NEPA planning on a, the Forest Service property basically east of the Bull Springs Tree Farm in conjunction with the BLM. So that would be kind of not, well, parts of it could touch up immediately adjacent to the city. Well, not really. Well, actually, yeah, I mean, on the south end of that, you know, kind of close to the Chevelle and Park area, there would be essentially city of Bend adjacency to that NEPA planning area that the Forest Service wants to work on. And the other, you know, other potential NEPA planning areas that they have in the pipeline, the Forest Service is not asking the collaborative to engage in as closely. So for NEPA planning, for prescribed fire smoke issues, I think it's appropriate for the city of Bend to put somebody forward.
But if you're already on it and Sally's on it, I did talk to Catherine Osborne, who works for Patrick, who is the counselor from Redmond, and that's actually in her professional career. So, you know, if somebody from Redmond could be on it.
But the city of Redmond has no adjacency to the Deschutes National Forest.
But that's what they do, though. That's what her company does. So she has firsthand professional experience.
And there's, there are two seats for forestry contractors and, you know, and...
But she's an elected...
Forest products.
She's an elected person.
Yeah, but the...
Yeah, but what?
Yeah, but the city of Redmond is not adjacent to the Deschutes National Forest.
They live in, she's in Deschutes County.
You know, if the Deschutes National Forest burns to the ground and catches a city on fire, it's not going to be Redmond.
Well, I should hope not.
It's a really different, different relationship. I mean, and I'm, you know, I love Catherine Osborne, but like...
Oh, good, I'll tell her.
I don't think that, I don't think that the city of Redmond should get preference over the three cities that are immediately adjacent to the Deschutes National Forest.
So what seat is Sally in, then?
Yeah.
She's going to fill an at-large seat.
And who makes these appointments?
It's a combination, basically. There's seats on the, there are seats on the steering committee. The constituency, in this case, local governments, get to put somebody forward. And then the steering committee has thumbs ups. So if, you know, if basically the three cities in the county can agree on someone, that person will be seated on the steering committee.
Are we voting on this?
Could. I mean, I don't, I don't know, like, I'm...
Who is ready for the seat?
Anthony.
Anthony, Anthony said he would, he was interested in serving. And he has, you know, he, from his work with, from his tribal work, he actually has a fair amount of forestry background.
He used to work on the trail cruising with the park service back in the day.
Yeah, more than that. I mean, he, like, for example, he was really involved with the Coke Hill Tribes on whatever that, whatever that state forest that is not a state forest anymore, but is going to be turned over to OSU for, to be managed as a research forest. I mean, he was really involved in that, in that deal. A lot of tribal legal stuff is natural resource related, so he has some background.
And basically, the goal is just to get a social license to have smoke and do NEPA. You know, basically pave the way for the things that we need to do to get fuel reduction and forest management done.
Yeah, the goal is to get agreement among a diverse group of stakeholders, and for those stakeholders to then put it out to, put it out to the broader community and their constituencies to try to get them on board.
Great. I don't see any action here. It's good update. That's fine.
Yeah, well, I mean, so basically, the question is, you know, whether you want to do it through a formal vote or just kind of informally say, "Sounds good." Does the county support?
Oh, I mean, is it a seat that, I mean, if it's not a Deschutes County appointment?
Right.
I mean, you have an idea, and you have an idea. We'll just leave it at that. If the city wants to make that official appointment through their process that we're offering this person to be on the collaborative, and the collaboratives accept them, fine with me. Okay, but yeah, proceed. No problems there at all. Anything else? Okay, so those are your two items. So coffee with the commissioner yesterday morning here in Bend. I went out through the Deschutes County Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. Nobody showed up, which is kind of funny. I knew half the people in there. I knew people very specifically in there, and I was talking to all kinds of people, but nobody responded to our, specifically to our, you know, social media postings. So just letting you know, I mean, I don't know if...
Last one I...
But the weather was terrible, too. It was like four inches of snow, and it was a mess yesterday, but...
It was exciting. Another day of winter.
Yeah.
The last one I did in Sisters, I had thirty.
Oh, and I had a dozen down in Lapine, but I mean, there's, I just know that nobody responded to the Twitter or the, yeah, the post or whatever. So that was just interesting. Kevin Larkin was in there, the Shepherd's House guys, and I spoke to some other folks. I talk to all people, but it's just I don't think anybody responded specifically, which was fine. Bullet and birthday party tomorrow, so 120 years for our paper of record here in the Deschutes County. I think I'll see if I can go get a cupcake. Mountain bike exhibit at the Deschutes County Historical Society. So it opens this Saturday afternoon. So it's, you know, a lot of great history about mountain bikes here in central Oregon, generations now, you know. So you think of the old timers or the current mountain bikers or all that. So this is really going to be a great exhibit at the Historical Society. It's opening up this weekend on Saturday, and it'll be in there for a couple of months probably. So, and then also, we're going to be hosting the last session of the Central Oregon and Thousand Friends Land Use Leadership Institute that I'm participating in, in this room next Monday night. So it's just a conclusion. Hopefully, I'll graduate. I only missed one of them, but it'll be in this room next Monday night.
You have a final exam?
Yeah, probably. I think they're going to set up testimony, kind of a mock testimony, I think, there's going to be. So if you, if you get through it without cracking into two-minute testimony, a three-minute testimony, maybe that's the test. We'll see. So that's my updates for today.
Okay, my update is that two nights ago, reading Horse and Rider to go to bed, they had a four-page spread on Sisters, Black Butte, and it's amazing. It's not quite the probably coverage of the Wall Street Journal a year ago for Sisters, but definitely it was a great write-up on the program. And those are all the horses out by the, you know, the cutouts. That's where they run their horses in the winter. So it was interesting. And then going to Helping Hands Thursday, it was great. Rick Russell came with a couple of people of his team, and the tour was outstanding. Their costs are about $32 a day. They fit so nicely in their community. Columbia Sportswear gives some of the people their jobs. And he would really love to come over here and check out what we have available. They're in five counties now. Their program is, I've got the numbers for the last two years, so I'll share that and get those out to you. And then on the way back from Salem on Friday morning, I had my local government advisory committee meeting, but the weather was so bad, I thought I better leave early. But the woman that I had wanted to meet that was supposed to be at that meeting at 10:00 was actually going to be in the DOWS for the groundbreaking ceremony for the navigation center. So I said, oh, because we went back that way, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, I've got to find her." And actually, Director Bell, so she'd been on our earlier call the prior month. We got together, and she's going to get together when she comes over here. But listening to the commissioners on that local government meeting, Dr. Muren was furious because she's not on the MAC. She thought it was incredibly inappropriate. And then Commissioner Thompson also said the same thing, that, "What is it? Why are you not having commissioners on the MAC?" And then what I said to her was, "Why has the funding for Central Oregon increased by a million dollars, and yet their target is 800 less households that they are going to be preventing going into homelessness?" So she was great. She sent me an email for saying Monday morning, and hopefully, she'll be over here maybe next week. So Brenda's helping arrange that for me.
Great.
Only thing I'll report is that the Council on Aging had their ribbon cutting on their new senior services center on Thursday. I think both Commissioner DeBonne and I were there. I got to share a few comments, remind everybody that the Board of Commissioners had contributed $327,000, and that was much appreciated.
Nice, new, modern facility, that's for sure.
It's a beautiful building.
I'd go there for lunch someday.
Yeah.
If I'm old enough. Okay, anything else? Seeing now, we do have executive session, so at this time, we'll go to executive session under land use.